All right.
Hey Renee, did you go to that, take care of that one on Rankin Road? Cause I was reminded you said we had done anything, so. Has he not been through this before? So we had to start the process over, so how long after thirty days?
Well, if when we can get him back before y'all.
Alright. Jay, you all ready again? Good morning. Let's call this, uh, Planning Commission meeting to order February twenty seven, twenty seventh, a little bit after nine o'clock. At this time, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Johnson, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Uh, certainly will. Our Father in Heaven, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to gather and take care of the business of the people of Rankin County. We ask that everything that transpires here today would be pleasing in your sight. Thank you so much for this beautiful weather, Father. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Alright, we got consideration approval of January second, two thousand fourteen minutes. Got a motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Old business.
Uh, there is no old business.
Okay, new consideration?
Okay, the first item under new considerations is a dimensional variance request for Stephanie Purvis. Uh, the property is located at the end of Kitty Hawk Circle in District Two. This is a one point three acre parcel, it's zoned RE one. This lot is not part of the Kitty Hawk subdivision. It's been divided off of the sixteen point three three acre parcel, uh, to the north of Kitty Hawk. Uh, this lot does not meet the one hundred foot minimum lot, uh, width or frontage requirement that's required by the RE one zoning, because it fronts entirely on a private drive. The county has received a written agreement from the Purvises stating that they will not further subdivide the property. Kitty Hawk dead ends and this property, um, is actually entirely on that private drive.
How many acres?
One point three oh.
That's it, right there in the?
In the black box.
Right in the black box, okay.
This is just the aerial view of it.
No. Why, why would it, is it like it is? I mean, why would you not grant?
There's a hundred foot minimum lot frontage on a public throughway and they don't meet that under our zoning.
How much do they meet? How much is it?
There's none on the public road there at all.
Oh, oh.
That's a private drive. The road ends, uh, like right here.
See, that is a private drive.
And this-
A private road.
Right.
Cause we still have requirements on private roads like this is a private drive which goes back to the west of the whole world, whatever that is, back in the back lawn.
There's, there's a house back here in the very back.
Oh, there is?
Mm-hmm. Originally, the fifteen acre shown here and the sixteen point three three was, uh, intended to be the second phase of Kitty Hawk. And it went to, back to the bank and so the bank divide, sold the property, it was divided. And now this person has split, uh, a lot off here and also another lot across the street.
What is the situation?
First, we let the bank be a developer and we're letting this other group be a developer.
Actually, we're not letting them be a developer. We actually have a commitment out of both thirteen one forty eight and one forty eight dash ten. They, they have both committed to no further subdividing of the property in any respect, which should eliminate our issue of the condition of the access, roads, drive, um, with the prohibition on further subdividing. Then there won't be more use of the private drive than what is proposed here. And so if they get the variance, this will be, this house will be constructed and then the, uh, there will be no further construction until such time as they convert the drive into a road that meets county specifications.
They understand that.
Yes, sir. They've committed, they've committed in writing to that.
I know that we-
We just, we just need to set up a public hearing.
Just need to set a public hearing for four, seven, fourteen.
Well, it'd be a week on its head, but.
Yeah, it would be. You wanna make that motion? Motion by Mr. Brown to set that public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay, the second item is a dimensional variance for Keisha White. It's on property across the street from the lot we just talked about at Kitty Hawk. Uh, it's shown in the black box here. This lot actually has approximately sixty five feet of frontage on the public road, but the RE one requires it to be one hundred feet, so it does not meet the dimensional requirements. Um, we've also received a written agreement from the Whites stating that they will not further sub- subdivide the property.
Same type of thing, correct?
Same exact thing. These were exactly the same time.
Except that this one has sixty five feet, basically about a thirty, about a thirty five, about a thirty five foot dimension.
Sixty five feet, ninety eight and a hundred.
So you've talked to them about all the, you know?
They're actually represented by council and who has been down this road before and understood what the issues were, contacted us early, cause he saw what was about to happen and, uh, so we were able to get it shut down.
Show all the stuff, it's gonna come later about the, you know, ingress, ingress, all that's gonna be absolutely.
And is it the intentions of these people to build a home?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They both plan to build a home.
Okay. If I have a motion, set the public hearing.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Number three. Oh, Mr. Slade.
Hey, Mr. President, uh, the, the next time on the agenda is actually a hearing on, on the consideration of potential nuisance property. This is District One property. Sherri Copeland will open that public hearing. At this time, I'll ask, uh, if Ms. Copeland is present. You'll come forward, please. Renee, if you'll, uh, go through the, uh, the photographs and an explanation of the condition of the property.
Okay, the property's located at one forty eight Tammy Avenue. That's in Triangle Acres. Um, it is in District One. We received a complaint in regard to inoperable vehicles being stored on this property. These pictures were taken January seventh, um, and then the new pictures were taken t- yesterday, two twenty six. There's been no change there. Uh, the certified mail was received, but we have not, uh, had any kind of response from Ms. Copeland.
How many vehicles you got out there that are inoperable?
They work. They just ain't driving places.
These van-
The pickup I had took the tire off, I had the man take the tire off, but the problem was, I didn't know that the rim wasn't gonna mount back on it, so I had to find a steel wheel, but they tested, they got his phone number. He got it mount, he got it on the wheel and everything, supposed to be mounting it, but it's today. And then Kim was gonna like straighten up the yard and help me get it still straightened up and.
When are they gonna help you do that?
Well, she said probably could get it done, it's clean the yard, break the lea- break the yard and clean it up, probably get it done within a month.
These, uh, RVs are
I can drive if I want to.
Vehicles here have been, vans, they've been here for years.
Yeah, I know, I pay for them. They, they can drive.
Sitting in the exact same spot.
Yeah.
They have, they've, they've never moved.
They still want, they still, they've got tags on it.
Do they have current tags, inspection stickers?
Yes, they do. I got tags on it, yes.
No current tags, inspection sticker?
I got it right there in the window.
She said it did.
I'm no ge- I mean, it's right there in the window, that current tag.
Okay.
I mean.
May I do it though, I mean?
Can we verify the tag deal?
Buy me or whatever, just give me time, I mean.
If you give us your name and number.
Sherri, S H E R R I. Six oh one. I'm gonna give you a f- uh, mine's, cause I, mine's off right now, six oh one eight four two three four two six. Mine's still gonna be on that one.
Do you just want us to meter there and verify that they run and our current tags?
Yes, and if they run, if they run, could they, do you have room to like move them from right out of the front?
There's a gate right behind them.
There what now?
There's a gate behind them. I could probably put one like beside the trailer.
That's what I'm saying, where the trailer, the end of the trailer is to the, to the right. Is there, is that open?
There's a, I mean, I, there's a gate I can open, yeah, and put it, one back there, but not both, without jumping up the backyard. I mean, that'd be something else, so. It's up to y'all.
What about the, and the?
I can't put both of them, but it's kinda tight. The six wheeler probably can go straight on back. And then the camper, I could scoot over or I could leave.
Well, when we go out there, could we look to see if there's a way they could be, um, I guess, um, if there's anywhere they could be arranged where it'd be, where it isn't like they're just sitting out?
It won't be so messed up.
Right.
Well, I could do the six wheeler, like I said, I could go straight on back with it, no problem. Cause there's a door set in the back, so I can't put like both of them back there.
Okay.
But the camper, I could leave it, when I get the six wheeler back there, I can leave the camper there or I could put the camper with the six wheeler, that would be.
We'll come out there, then I'll, then if y'all would look and just see if it's a way to help. What about the, and what other one, which other one, the car?
Well, the car here doesn't have a current tag, um.
Does it run?
Well, I just, that just ran out. I just parked that one. I mean, I was running it, yeah.
What's the tag on it?
I'm, I'm in Lincoln right, I'm in the Lincoln right now.
December of thirteen?
Cause it just ran out. I just, cause I was driving it and then I started driving his Lincoln, taking him to doctor, cause that don't have air and he's the disabled worse than I am. And he's, I gotta take him to doctors and stores and he, that only has heat. And he can't be, there's breathing problems, so I had to start to drive another car. And that's why I kept the other one for sale.
Besides.
Then I put it all in my name, cause when he died, I wasn't gonna go up the headache, trying to wheel, trying to do all that, would've taken four years to get it done. Cause my stepmom and daddy took, died, it took three years to get this place in his name. So I was going ahead and putting it in my name.
Are you the only one that drives all these?
I move around and drive them, mm-hmm.
You're the only one that drives them?
But I got, but I'm in the car. I mean, I'll bounce around. The pickup, like I said, we're getting, trying to get that tire going and if I can get the other driver's side tire on, then I can drive it.
But I'm saying you the only-
Then I can park my other one over there. Yeah, on all of them.
You're the only driver in the, in the household?
Right now, well, but not the other pickup, just like the car, that George's pickup, the other one is, he has another one too. That ain't mine.
Does he drive?
Mm-hmm. He's probably getting that and I think worked on. I think it has transmission problem.
This, this is the vehicle.
George, mm-hmm. Uh, it's antique, that's all I know about it. I don't know. It lives on the other, on this one.
You can't store inoperable vehicles on your property, so if that one doesn't run, doesn't have current tire or current inspection sticker, then it should be removed.
Oh yeah, I think he's probably getting it fixed though. I'll find out, but I know it got antique tag on it.
You said that's not actually yours, right? That's the first?
The guy that rents on the other end.
Next door?
But inside, yeah, that apartment, yeah.
Oh, in, okay.
It's inside the double Y.
I got you, alright.
Apartment. So don't wanna, so I got like a time to meet? Or I could sit here and figure that, let y'all do that? Okay, so that, then the double N, and then see what happens. Did y'all want, get Kim number, she's gonna, uh, the one that's gonna be helping me? I got it on my phone. Did y'all want to contact her to verify? Cause she told me, I mean, I didn't wanna. Sorry to get in this mess, but I ain't never been a total moron.
Any more questions before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, I do. If you had, um, okay, if we go out there and, and look at them and, um, verify and, and the ones that are, whether they're operable or not, verify that. And if we could, if there's a way to arrange it more, the, those travel motorhomes help are there and then you get, you're gonna let, you got somebody's gonna help you clean up. And you think you can have it done in, um, thirty days?
That's what she said.
So if we gave her-
She said, but it is by April.
If we, um, declare it a nuisance and give her thirty days, would that be the, what, that'd be the?
Probably the most appropriate.
That gives you thirty days to get it cleaned up and then nothing would, um, then nothing would happen. But if you don't have it cleaned up within that thirty days, you've already been declared a nuisance, so then you would, it would, it would automatically go further. But this would be giving you the, this, this gives you a deadline that you know you have to meet, otherwise it would wind up, uh,
In court.
In the court. So I mean, it's the way we handle a lot of things, sometimes we don't give you thirty days, so we're trying to help you here.
Appreciate it.
And if you would, we appreciate you doing your part, cause we're reaching out to help you.
See, what happened too, when I got my letter in July, I had forty five hundred dollars stolen from me, from the mechanic supposed to be doing, helping and stole that and Rankin County, they, they been, they ain't done nothing with it. If I had that, I could do a lot more with my, pay somebody to do my yard, you know what I'm saying, do stuff, you know, more things. But if I get that back, I'll be a lot better off.
You see, what the, the problem is with the neighbors, surrounding neighbors and things, things like this create, um, rodents and, you know, a place for a snake to lay, place for mosquitoes to house, uh, and it creates, so it's a problem for the people surrounding where you live, you live, so.
Sorry, they got the news.
We're gonna, we're gonna reach out and help you for, declare it nuisance, give you thirty days and, uh, and then our department will come out and tell you, make sure you know exactly what needs to be done. I, I'm a little disappointed, you've had this since July and you've not done much to help clean it up, so we're, we're really, we're, we're really extending ourselves, I hope you appreciate that.
I do, but I don't have enough friends and like I said, the mechanic that we had twenty something years, a handyman, whatever you wanna call him, done that, I mean, then it's hard to find somebody to help you.
Okay.
And she says she can get on Facebook, get people to help, so.
Well.
She must know something, cause she got the man come out fix the water leak, so.
Gotcha.
Um, so I'm assuming that she get it done, and if she don't, then I'll have to deal with it.
You own the place? You own the place? Okay, you don't rent this?
No, I mean, I got it, it's hard to say. A guy was, a guy, he live in there, he's really disabled, they're putting like nuts home, I let him live there.
But you own, but you own the property?
I own it, yeah, it was, he was the previous owner and I'm the owner now, yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanna know. You are the owner, okay.
But we split the taxes, insurance and all that.
Okay.
I appreciate y'all.
Get the name on the first cell number, since that's not her number. Okay, good. Well, we can close that public hearing. Uh, it'd be appropriate to take action. Jared's suggestion of thirty days. Go ahead and declare it a nuisance.
Declare it a nuisance and give them thirty, give them thirty days in there.
Give thirty days for cleanup.
Aye, got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Mark Heat nuisance property. This is a District Two property. This time we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if Mr. Heat is present. Mr. President, I don't s- uh, uh, I don't get a response, uh, concerning Mr. Heat. We'll close that public hearing. Um, Renee, do you wanna go ahead and show up quickly?
Alright, this property's located at one eighteen Belgroth Boulevard. It's at Belgroth Subdivision. This is part of the Reservoir Community District and it's a District Two property. We've received complaints in regard to, um, rotten fascia board on the left-hand side of this home. Um, we've gotten multiple complaints. These pictures were taken back in September, um, and then this is the new picture that was taken yesterday. Uh, there's been no change. The certified letters both were returned unclaimed. Um, we've been unable to make contact with the owner.
Okay.
This time it'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay, so we're gonna close that public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Is this on the front or back of the house?
It's on the side.
It's like the side.
Pretty much all the way around the house.
It's the pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we give him fifteen days to get it repaired and a report back to Renee and him or whoever needs to report to.
You wanna declare it a nuisance along with that?
Think they can do that in fifteen days?
Two weekends?
We've not been able to make contact with the man anyway, so.
Yeah.
Oh.
I have.
Oh, oh, they've not?
They've not.
Oh.
I believe it may be a rental home actually, but, uh, every, all the mail goes there and everything's just been returned unclaimed. I hadn't been able to find any other information on him.
Tax bill goes there?
Yes, sir.
I got quite a few little rental properties in that neighborhood.
You wanna leave it at fifteen? You wanna give him thirty or you just wanna declare it a nuisance?
If they can't find him, it doesn't make the dividend about the time. We have to locate him. We'll leave it at fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Randy Hall nuisance property, another District Two property. This time we'll open the public hearing, Ms. Hall. Renee, if you will, uh, show us.
This property is at one nineteen Belgroth Boulevard in Belgroth Subdivision. Uh, it's part of the Reservoir Community District. Uh, we've received, uh, complaints in regard to loose warped siding that's pulling away from the house. These pictures were taken in September. Um, the certified mail letters were received and Mr. Hall called and said that he would get to work on it, but, uh, the pictures yesterday indicate there's been no change.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I, I, uh, I did get the material and I'm ready to fix it. It's just, uh, weather. I took two days of vacation. It rained two days. I'm ready to go. I don't have any excuses. If you could just give me through March, I'll get this fixed. I'll take vacation and get it done.
Gotcha.
The last thing I wanna be is standing up here doing this, I, you know, I'm embarrassed enough, but, uh, I will, by the end of March, have it taken care of one way or the other.
Well, I agree with you. We've not had, uh, uh, suitable weather too much outside work.
Well, I'm not gonna lie, I took a ladder out there and it sank about two feet. I didn't-
Hey, I believe you.
I didn't wanna fall, so.
Right, yeah.
But I will get this addressed and get it taken care of.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate you working with us on that, that's a-
I'm sorry to be here, I really.
That's okay, we're-
I will get it done.
We're glad to have residents that wanna step forward to be able to do this. I mean, that's what we're all about, trying to work together.
Uh, well, if I have to take a week, I'll take a week, but I'll get it fixed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will close that public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Close that. It'd be appropriate to take action, I think, uh, thirty days lead time. You can go ahead and take action, declare it, but give the thirty day lead time.
We just honor his request. He said to get it done in March.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
That's about thirty days, yes.
Still declared, okay. Motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Don't fall off that ladder now.
Yes, sir. I want, I know the house across the street from me.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President, next item is the Burnett Russell nuisance property, District One property. This time we'll open the public hearing. Is, uh, Burnett Russell present? Renee, if you'll show us that review.
Alright, this property is located at seven ninety-three North Church Street in Florence. It's a District One property. Uh, we s- we received a complaint in regard to a partially burned manufactured ho- home on the property, um, rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. Uh, these pictures were taken back in November. And now these are the new pictures that were taken, uh, yesterday. There's been no change other than now they've started, uh, construction work without a permit. Uh, we went out yesterday and posted a stop work order on the property. Uh, the certified mail was received, but we didn't get any response. These are yesterday.
Is that construction or tearing it down?
Looks like construction.
That looks like tearing down to me.
Are you tearing it down or reconstructing?
Y'all got me wrong. That's the wrong property. I don't own that property.
Uh, you don't own the property?
Not that property. Yeah, that property's what you got right there. That's someone else's property.
Okay, which, which property is yours?
Seven ninety three North Church Street.
Is that it?
No.
Is that it?
No.
Alright, so we just identified the wrong piece of property?
I'm sure you did.
Okay, well, we'll just have to readdress that then and start over.
Hmm.
That's not church.
Are any of these photos your property, Mr. Russell?
Right.
Are any of these photos your property?
No.
None of that is your property?
No.
Oh, really? Hmm. Okay.
So you're stopping the truck on the church park on three.
Right. I moved the truck, I put it up here. Uh, the truck is longer, but I broke the tires down on it. I created a drive in, when you have drivers.
I saw you got a two driver.
Exactly. And I'm going.
The fresh truck behind you, I'm gonna do it.
No. It's on my property, it's my, the first truck.
That's what we're asking for, that very first truck, is that on your property?
Come back, come back.
Okay, wait just a minute. I gotta get back, just a minute, I'm going the wrong way.
Oh, you're really going the wrong way now.
I think I'm not going at all, man.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Just a minute.
Isn't technology wonderful?
Yeah, go down to the, it says hell.
I wish they would give me a clue.
Okay. Which one you talking about, John?
Okay, that's his backyard.
So.
That's right.
Is this yours?
Yeah, that's why I'm straightening up there. That, that, all that's cleared up, but I just put some new wood there.
Okay, is that yours?
Is that your house?
No.
Okay, so none of that?
That's not yours either.
No, my house is a brick house on the front.
I think the only thing we had was his, the backyard.
Where he cleaned up that debris and, and he moved the pickup truck that we had asked.
I think where that leaves us is we don't have any issue.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
We're sorry, we're sorry, we inconvenienced you.
That's alright.
But it, you can see it was, um, a mistake. I don't know how we made it, but anyway, sorry about that. You wouldn't happen to know, uh, whose property it is, dude?
That's, that's what we're finding out.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. President, what we need to do with that, if we close the public hearing, we just need to, to make sure that the minutes reflect that no actions taken on the Burnett Russell nuisance property, District One.
Do y'all get that, no action taken on that?
So, no, we don't need to do any motion or anything, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Clear that, okay.
Mr. President, the next item is the Carla Griffith nuisance property. It's a District Two property. I'll ask, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if Carla Griffith is present. Carla Griffith. Mr. President, I don't see any, uh, anyone here to answer for the Carla, Carla Griffith nuisance property in District Two. I'll ask Renee to go through the, the review with us.
Alright, this is located at four sixty-one Fan and Landing Circle. These pictures were taken in November. The complaint was in regard to inoperable vehicles. We had several in that, uh, area along Fan and Landing. These are the new pictures that were taken yesterday and there's been no change. Uh, both certified letters were received, but we've not had a response.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the board.
Uh, Mr. President, we'll close that public hearing and then it, it'll be appropriate to take action.
Okay.
Is that the only vehicle he's got over there?
That one is the only one at that location.
Is that the only, uh, thing that's showing that, uh, as far as a nuisance?
On that property, yes, sir.
Okay.
Somehow my pictures are out of order, so I was trying to catch up. I'm sorry.
Gotcha. Yes, ma'am. That's okay.
This, this is the next one though. Um, do you wanna say that last one again, or it's just that one truck?
It's just the one truck out there that's inoperable?
One truck, mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Still haven't declared a nuisance, cause they've had a couple of years to clean it up.
Okay. So is that in form of a motion?
Yeah.
Alright, motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Josephine and J T Griffith Estate nuisance property, District Two property. I'll, open that public hearing. I'll ask if, uh, there's anyone here to speak on the Josephine and J T Griffith Estate. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone answering for Josephine and J T Griffith Estate, uh, so we'll close that public hearing. I'll let Renee go through the review for us.
Alright, this is located at four fifty-nine Fan and Landing Circle in that same area as the other vehicles. There's several on this property. These pictures were taken in November. And these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. There's been no change. Uh, the mail was received, but we haven't gotten any kind of response.
I think of a lot of those things. It looks like a pretty big area.
Uh, it, it is.
Several acres?
I think so, couple acres.
That's a valuable property too.
Looks like you have a bit of two acres. It sure looks, it looks big in the pictures.
Yeah.
As you know, in situations like this where you've got an estate-
Right.
-property, those are somewhat problematic. It's hard-
As you know, in situations like this where you've got an estate property, those are somewhat problematic, it's hard to know exactly who's gonna answer for the condition of the property.
Right.
So, uh, my suggestion would be that, that it be declared a nuisance and be taken up to the next level and allow the justice court judge to sort out
Sort out.
who needs to take responsibility for it.
What if they can't, can't anybody show up?
Yeah, that's a, that's a problem, obviously. Uh, where you've got a situation like that, Jay, um, you've got some minimum due process requirements that you have to go through. You've got to, we'll have to show, the county will have to show efforts that are being made to notify the person or persons who should take responsibility for the estate. There may have to be some, eventually there may have to be some court action to make that determination, who are the heirs of the individual. Most likely though, uh, in situations like this, my experience has been about the only way to rectify the situation where you don't have a responsible person is for the county to actually take the action to clean it up and then to impress a lien on the property.
Who's paying the taxes?
I'm not sure about that, I'd have to check and see who's paying the taxes.
Well, I don't want to go out and clean it up, we ain't gonna be able to get our money back out of it.
Well, the property itself will stand good for
The lien on the property.
The lien, the property itself, not an individual, the property itself is responsible for it. Obviously, the, the issue then becomes, how do you extract the, a, a reimbursement of what you spend from the property, and there's process to do that. It can act, that lien can be foreclosed upon.
Are the vehicles, are they registered to, to anyone, I mean, to the same people or different people, or do we know anything about them?
We didn't get any tag numbers to check that, the certified mail, for, we have three properties in this area, they were all signed by Carla Griffiths. And they appear to be family members. But she signed, she picked up the mail and signed for all three of these, the same person.
I guess, because that's what I was leading to, is if they're whether they don't run or not, but they're, they belong to somebody, are we in some type of, uh, liability for hauling off somebody's vehicle?
We'd have to have an affidavit on some that's certain years old, certain years of age.
Well, in, in this particular case, Jared, if they're inoperable vehicles, then they are being allowed to be stored on that property violation of the property maintenance code. So, it's, it's a violation of our ordinance without regard to the ownership at that point. They, they should not be there, and the owner of the property is allowing them, suffering them to be present on the property in violation of our ordinance.
So we just haul them to an impound yard?
Can't do it that way.
For a period of time, so long, and then advertise the proper, the proper channels of advertising?
Well, it would, I, it, obviously at that point, it's gonna be up to the, uh, to the hauler to go through the process.
Okay.
So he'll have a tow bill that's associated with it.
I got you.
And so, um, assuming that the county takes responsibility like that, um, the suggestion that I would make is, is that if you decide to do that, and I don't know that you guys are in a position to do that or not, but if you decide to go that route, then it would be my suggestion that we go through the process of, of impressing a lien against the property for all costs of remediating the nuisance. And then at some point, the board will have the ability to cause that lien to be enforced against the property. That's a court process.
Someone live, live there?
No idea.
Dwayne says yes. Dwayne said yes.
I know in the past, we've taken action to go out and clean up a lot.
Yes, sir.
But the board did it, how are we gonna ever get it back to us if it goes to justice court? Would the, would the judge decide, will we clean it?
Absolutely, you, you guys will have to decide the method that you want to remediate this particular nuisance. If you decide to declare it a nuisance and send it up to justice court, that's one avenue of recourse. But if you decide to take responsibility for cleaning it up, because we don't know who is supposed to be responsible, and it'll be just as difficult for the justice court to figure out who owns the property as it is for us.
Yeah.
Then that's a process that stays right here, it doesn't go to justice court.
So there's no way to get it cleaned up unless we do it, going to justice court, cleaning it is not an option.
Well, uh, I, I don't want to declare that, I would assume that, um, at, at some point during the justice court process, there will be attempts to actually serve a misdemeanor criminal offense on somebody, and if somebody's living there.
Yeah.
They might get the impression that they need to go ahead and tend to this, so it could be effective.
Right.
So we could do that before we did any type, okay, that'd be the
Well, this is gonna be a continuing nuisance situation.
Yeah, but that's the way I'd wanna go, before we just jump in there and clean it up.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at though, how we ever get it back to us if it goes to justice court?
As long as that nuisance situation is out there, Jay, it's a continuing violation of the ordinance. So this is not a one-shot deal for us by any stretch.
Okay. So your recommendation sounds like to move it on up to a nuisance, probably let them sort it out a little bit first and then see what happens from there.
I think so. I think so. And let me be clear about something, and in a public setting like this, I think it's effective to remind everyone, uh, just because the tax statements are being mailed to someone.
Right.
And even being paid by someone, that is not a legal indication of ownership. Okay, so, just because we know that tax statements are being mailed to a relative, that is not a, a basis to establish the ownership of the property. Alright, so, we feel confident that we can find somebody that seems to have an interest in the property, or thinks they do, and they're willing to pay taxes on it, and that's a good indication that they may have an interest in the property. But it's gonna take a court, in this case, to decide who actually owns the property for the purpose of being held accountable for the condition of property.
Right.
Let me just say this about the property, they'll be lined up to buy that property. Because it's valuable property.
Okay. Well, that's even more reason, in my opinion, to see if the justice court can help us with this one.
Okay. You wanna close the public hearing on that?
Yes, sir, we'll close that public hearing, be appropriate to take action.
Alright.
Declare a public nuisance.
Alright, got a motion by Mr. Brown?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like a sign, motion carries.
Finally, Mr. President, we have the Lena Freeman nuisance property, District Two. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask if, uh, if there's anyone here to speak on the Lena Freeman nuisance property here, anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on the Lena Freeman nuisance property, I'll ask Renee to go through the review for us.
Alright, this has the address of four fifty-nine Fan and Landing Circle. Uh, this is the condition of the property, November fourteenth, it was in regard to inoperable vehicles. These are the new pictures taken yesterday. Been no change.
That in District Two?
Yes, sir, it's at Fan and Landing Circle, like the others.
Looks like Fan and Landing Circle.
The certified mail, both letters were received, we didn't get any response.
Okay. Close that public hearing?
Close the public hearing, yes, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Declare a public nuisance.
Motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like a sign, motion carries. Is that all we've got on the nuisance properties?
That's it.
Alright, site plan, architectural review?
There is none.
No, none on the, uh, this, so the next, anything else? Next meeting will be held Thursday, April third, nine AM. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like a sign, motion carries. Thank you, now we will call to order uh, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors Workshop. Attendees this morning, discussion items, we got Ronnie Calvin with Comcast Senior Director, External Affairs. Good morning.
Good morning, how you doing?
I'm doing good, how you doing, Dave?
Good, good, good. I, uh, appreciate you, uh, having me today, and, uh, really wanted to put a, uh, kind of a name and face together for Comcast, for the, uh, you know, for Rankin County. Many of you probably knew Frances Smith, she retired last year after thirty years with the company, and, uh, she was with us kinda all the way up through the, kinda through the holidays, but she has retired and I've taken over her role. Been with the company thirty years, I'm born and raised in Meridian, Mississippi, so I'm a lifelong Mississippi native and, uh, but I will be handling, uh, I, I have three states that I work in today, but, uh, I'll be your contact going forward, and, uh, I've got business cards that I'd like to, uh, to get to the
Yes, sir.
to the clerk, where it's got my cell phone numbers, all of my contact information, my email, and, uh,
So when of our, when our constituents give us a call on a complaint or whatever, we need to give you a call directly?
Absolutely, you can call me directly, you can email me.
Okay.
Just, just as we had the issue that arose, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, that we closed the loop on.
Okay.
And so, again, I wanna be your, your contact, and, uh, if there's any, again, any constituent issues, or if there's, obviously, we've got a, you know, a franchise with the, uh, with the county.
Right.
I think it's valid through, I think, December of next year, twenty fifteen. So, you know, I'll be handling, you know, any kind of, uh, government affairs type work, as well as kinda the face for Comcast for you to, to be able to reach out to me.
Okay. You have people, I guess you have people in Rankin County that you basically work under you, that you, uh, contact also whenever we do have any kind of
What we have, I'll give you a little bit of background, we have a, uh, we have an office, a sales office.
Right.
You know, in, uh, in Pearl, kinda near where our, uh, old operation was, when it was SUSCOM. And now all of our, uh, our centralized operation now is in the old Kmart building, right off of fifty-five, fifty-five North. If you go north, it's on your left there, kinda right beside CarMax. So all of our technicians base out of there, we've got, you know, several hundred employees that kinda, and that base out of there, as well as there's a call center there, and, and another call center up in Madison, uh, the city of Madison. So that's kinda the way the operation is set up, so I have technical contacts there, Director of Technical Operations, kinda for this area is based in, uh, in the office that I'm in, so, you know, I have a direct line to, uh, to, you know, the technical people there, construction, you know, human resource, basically, you know, they're all housed there in one location with me.
Right.
Mr. Calvin, if, uh, so y'all have vacated your property that existed on Old Brandon Road?
Correct.
That office?
Correct, that we, we moved in, uh, when I got here, seven years ago, when I transferred here, we had, uh, it was nine different, uh, nine different buildings, really all around the entire, you know, kinda the three county area. And, uh, we were able to consolidate down into just three buildings now, and that's, that was kinda part of that, you know, that whole consolidation.
Do you have any plans for expanding your service area in the Rankin County area, maybe to the rural areas in, in the forecast?
What we do is, we have dollars that are set aside every year to, you know, to extend our plant. And anytime that there is subdivisions, all of those, we have a construction supervisor based out of Jackson, he's, he's in constant contact with developers, and, uh, you know, that's, that's kinda the way the process works. We, you know, if a new subdivision breaks ground, we'll be in there with the, you know, with the power company, the water, and, and, uh, you know, that's, that's kinda the way our, our plant extension, uh, you know, process works.
About existing?
Pardon me?
What about existing, uh, subdivisions?
Uh, if we get calls, we'll, we have coordinators that just go out, they'll look at it, and let's just say it's, uh, someone that you will, Comcast will commit to, I think it's around thirteen hundred dollars, is what we'll, you know, we'll come out of pocket to bill to a resident, if it's anything, uh, you know, further than that, then we would ask the customer to, uh, to help out with the, uh, with the construction cost, and that may mean, you know, them putting the, uh, you know, opening a trench up, or, you know, a whole different, it could be, you know, a hundred different scenarios in a situation.
You don't have, that, that service is not already available in a lot of areas, is that not correct?
Um.
I mean, i- like in the general area of a rural subdivision?
Ask one, ask, ask me one more different way, I mean, I can't say we have a hundred percent of Rankin County.
I think that's part, I think that's part of the problem, there's some won't, I, I've had contact with some that want to be, and I think y'all told them that, uh, it's not out there and to be too costly to move in that direction, because you don't have, I don't, I don't know all the technical, um, terminology. I'm sure Rusty does, but, uh.
I can give you an idea, I mean, normally, we're, we don't, you know, let's just say that, uh, there's a, you know, where our plant ends, and then there's someone, you know, a half a mile away. If there is no other homes between where our plant ends and that, that customer that lives a half mile away, chances are we're not gonna, and a lot of there's build-out requirements, and I'm sure in our franchise, that would tell you normally it's like, we would ask about twenty homes a mile is, is a reasonable, and then, you know, we usually get, you know, forty.
I may put someone in contact with you then.
Please do.
I've just looked, I do have all your contacts. And let me ask you, the, uh, situation that was in Rankin County was in my district. Um, how did that, uh, I, I've not heard back from the homeowner, so I'm assuming it was, uh, worked out okay?
Yes, it was Mr. Little, and, uh, we, it was kind of an intermittent problem, and we, when we got out, the final resolution was, we found squirrels had chewed, we were not, squirrels love our cable. I mean, they, it's how they sharpen their teeth or whatever, but they, there was damage, it was about thirty-five feet of damaged plant that was changed down. It was on our trunk line too. And it, it just basically, they'd eaten all the aluminum off of the cable, got water in it, and, uh.
I think that's what, and I think his problem, if I'm, I recall, I was in the meeting when he came up here, Ms. Dandy, and, uh, that they had been out and told him that they had, there was squirrel damage. But the problem was, no one was coming out to fix the problem.
Yeah, well, that, that, that is a problem.
And, and that, you know, um, so that's when we start hearing the complaints, after they've exhausted the avenues they have. And that's what we wanna try to, uh, uh, avoid.
Well, I can assure you, I'll be your contact, and I, I'm a engineer by trade, and I mean, I, uh, so I, I get the technical part of it, I'm not over that area, but I, but I do understand kinda what happened as far as the
But you're the one that would, you're not over it, but you're the one that can, uh, I guess, uh,
I can make things, I will make it happen, and then I'll also close the loop with you.
Okay.
And that's, that's, uh, I, I promise you that, that will happen. If you get me, if I get something from any one of you, I'll close the loop once we're complete.
And that, that's a key factor with us, because we have to have someone that we can actually touch base with, you know, and whenever we have services like this, constituents look to us on everything, so.
I understand it wholeheartedly, I promise you.
It's very imperative that we do have someone like you that will close the loop and basically get the, you know, bottom line is, the people want the services that they pay for, and that's what we expect, so.
That's what we expect to get, that's, that's a fair request, and that's why my cell number's on there.
Wonderful.
Even like I was in Meridian yesterday, but I, 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 you know, people tracked me down.
Right.
I got a call from, uh, someone in Monroe, Louisiana, yesterday on my cell phone, so I want you to use it, and text whatever's easier for you, I promise you.
So you take texts then?
Text, whatever you need to do, just, uh.
Wonderful.
I really appreciate you coming today, and, because I will say, uh, I hear numerous complaints, uh, about your service, and, and I, I saw, you, you do have, uh, I think you have a lot of PR to, to repair, to mend, because we've had, and, and this comes even from within the, uh, some of the areas, say like in the Florida city limits. And I've had several people have some negative things to say, so, I'm just, I'm just telling you from a business side, business person to another one, that, you know, these are things that you, you all need to work on, and, and I, we would appreciate it, just like
Yeah, we do, we really do appreciate you stepping forward.
The main thing is, if you do hear it, hit it to me.
Cause if you don't know about it, you can't fix it.
Right.
Exactly, I mean, I found out about Mr. Little's problem, again, and, uh, and then once I got involved.
Right.
You know, we, I made things, made it, made it right, basically.
Well, there you go, that's, and that's what, that's, we appreciate that more than you know. So, yeah, if we can get your contact, I guess, did, have you already got your card?
I've got ten business cards here, I'd like for you to at least put them in your bill folder.
That would be wonderful. Yes, sir, that would be great.
Yeah, please, thank you.
The way we can get it in our contacts and, uh,
Thank you.
Hopefully, we won't have to call you very much, but when we do, then we appreciate you having that availability.
Good, just, again, just a name and a face, and I, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ron. Alright, at this time, we have, uh, Mike Cook with Terra Renewal West, Steve Hall, Denali Water, and Toby Hardland, Hardler Road? If I said, I'm sorry, I butchered it, uh,
Hardler Road.
Uh, Water Solutions.
Yeah, I'm Steve Hall, uh, appreciate you having us this morning, uh, this is Mike Cook, our environmental guy. Uh, Denali Water is an environmental service provider, and we work with, uh, municipal wastewater treatment plants, water treatment plants. Uh, Denali Water is an environmental service provider and we work with, uh, municipal wastewater treatment plants, water treatment plants. Provide services and one of those services is bio-solids land application. And what we wanted to, to come here this morning and let you know that we're gonna be coming into Rankin County and working with local farmers. That want the material to be spread on their land as a fertilizer supplement. And part of that process is gonna involve you guys as the state of Mississippi requires a modification to your solid waste management plan. To allow these sites to be permitted.
Well, we've already done that.
Absolutely, it'll, it'll be a minor modification, so we just, we didn't wanna come trekking around in Rankin County without letting, letting you guys know that. That what we're doing, so that was, and we, we provided an information package just so you know who we are, what we do, that was.
You're a, you're a different company than we already have included in the.
Yes, we are.
Solid waste plan.
We are, we're a different company.
And when you apply your material, do you inject it?
No, so we land apply it as a solid and then we incorporate it either by disc or aeration.
So it's not injection, it's through?
Through incorporation.
Incorporation.
Correct, this is not a liquid material, this is a de-watered cake material.
Where does Terra Renewal come in at?
Terra Renewal is our, we're, we're going through a rebranding, it's, it's a pain to be honest, but, uh. We're changing names from Terra Renewal to Denali Water is what it is.
Terra Renewal's who we have already.
Right, and that's the industrial side, so, and. Terra Renewal Services. Yeah. We are Terra Renewal West.
So y'all basically incorporating together or y'all?
No, 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 this is totally separate, yeah, Terra Renewal Services does industrial.
I got you.
And Terra Renewal West and Ollie Water, we're strictly municipal, that's all we do, so. And to get a permit to operate in Rankin County through M D U, we have to come to you guys. And get the solid waste management plan amended, we don't have any farmers located yet, we haven't talked to anyone. But when we do, we'll bring all that information, I will submit it to you guys, to your attorney or whoever designate. I'm assuming it's him.
One that's granted over here, he's, he's our go-to man.
Your material that you collect, you basically broadcast it on top of the earth and then it's tilled into the soil?
Correct.
What about a farmer that does a no-till application?
Then he will not want the material, I mean, it's, it's just part of the regulations within Mississippi that has to be incorporated, so.
Well, not necessarily. But remember, we sat in, I sat, I, I'll speak up, I've sat in on some meetings and in the discussion, the way some of it is applied. Is, um, uh, with this aerator and it's, uh, and, and the reason I, I'm, I questioned that. And I'm speaking up is because I have contacted, I just made mention to some of this, um, you're not aware of, to some, uh, local. Farmers that have, uh, pasture land, so basically the same type situation, they don't, uh, you know, plow it and till it in. But this aerator that they apply it with is, um, uh, it's acceptable and it's one of the applications that is approved. To, uh, put it in the soil. And the, uh, hay farmers and people with pastures have shown a, um, a strong interest. Because in our, when I met with y'all once, uh, her, in the meeting when you were discussing this once, that was one of the questions. Because so many of them don't till their property because this is hay property, hay land. So the thing, the same thing could apply in no-till, a no-till situation. Uh, the, the, uh, plan they had was, um, and you can get a lot more detail, but we answered, uh, they answered a lot of the questions. As far as odor, as far as, uh, the way it's incorporated in, uh, as far as, uh, the type solution it is. Um, they even, um, you know, what EPA requires them as far as being so far away from property lines. Tributaries, ponds, et cetera, so they had it covered pretty well, but to answer your question, um. The no-till, this would work in a no-till situation because of the way it's with the aerator. There, there's big aerators that go across and that, they've, uh, I mean, that's approved application to.
The reason it would work is because it's a cake and not a liquid, you couldn't go out there and spread the liquid on top of the ground and try to go in and use this type of material. But with cake, it's, you know, sitting right there and you're, you're pushing it in the ground, aerating.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, the, we were trying to, to, uh, determine the, uh, density of this, uh, material. And best way you could put it was kind of like, um, like a jello.
Jello.
Mm-hmm, it's not, um, not dry powder, but it's not something that runs everywhere.
In fact, after that meeting, I went and got some of the samples and brought it back to them, so.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm glad I didn't.
Um, Doug, Doug Carter, hey, bud. Are you, uh, have you already checked us out and everything, everything?
I had a question about grant restrictions and for all time, I'm glad you took those questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you were familiar with it and, you know, already up on it and everything like that.
I may, like, I may mention to some of the, uh, farmers that deal with, with hay and pasture land. And, uh, one comment, uh, was, hey, bring it on.
Yeah, it's a great supplement to them, it saves the local farmers a lot of money, so. We just, like I say, wanted to tell you who we are and we're, we're gonna be actively pursuing land.
I'm glad you guys came forward and, uh, that's, that's our biggest concern, making sure that, you know, with the EPA and everything like that, we're all above board. And that's our go-to man to make sure we're, we're all.
Yep.
Right.
We'll have to conduct that, so there's a timeframe here that has to.
So how, how does this compare to, uh, say, someone going out and scraping out chicken houses and spreading on your pasture?
Chicken houses is, is not a regulated product, they can go pretty much have at it, they just, you know, everybody has to use best management practices. Where this material is, it's under the government's eyes, so you, it's heavily regulated, you know, we have to follow by a lot of laws and regulations.
But as far as nutrients for the soil, the soil, which is better?
I would have to say this material because chicken litter is so high in phosphorus and that's one of the concerns that, you know.
Another thing, chicken litter is, uh.
Odorous.
Yeah, but another thing, chicken litter contains every kind of foreign seed.
Right, you got all kinds of different extras.
Weeds and things. I mean, if you're looking at it from, putting it on, uh, uh, cropland.
Is yours completely odorless?
It's not completely, you know, it's, it's more of a musty, it's just, there's nothing like the industrial.
Right.
It's, um, it's just earthy, musty, so you, you don't have the odor complaints like you would with, with all types of materials.
Chicken is, chicken litter will be greater.
Sorry?
The cost comparison between the two?
Well, there is no cost to local farmers.
Really?
We get our money from the municipality and we provide this to the farmers for free.
It's basically a disposal, they ought to be able to dispose of it and this is the way to dispose of it. So that's what I'm saying, it, it's not a, and, and also, I mean, step in if I'm wrong, but I believe I understood in the meeting. That, uh, if the, the farmer can't, uh, incorporate it in, you all have the equipment to incorporate it for, for them.
Absolutely, like I say, we'll, we'll do it, or if the farmer has the equipment, we'll be glad to pay them so much per acre to, to operate their, their equipment, do it, so.
And you have a window of time that has to be incorporated in, so it's not like it's stockpiled and laid out there.
You cannot stockpile it, everything that we haul that day has to be spread and incorporated.
Process, you gotta move it and put it out.
Absolutely, so that, that eliminates a lot of the odor issues also.
Now, have y'all got a Rankin County, y'all Rankin County based or how's that?
No, we're actually, our company is based out of Arkansas.
Okay.
Uh, we're doing, uh, city of Vicksburg right now, we do land application every year, we're under contract with them, we're in city of Jackson right now doing work. We're heavily involved in Mississippi, I mean, I pretty much live over here.
Right.
So, I just don't have a physical address. I live in my truck.
I understand, okay.
But that was it, and like I say, we've got a little information pack for you guys to, to read and if you have any questions. Ms. Demby's got all of our contact information, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
All of this is covered on the farm bill, okay?
I don't believe it has anything to do with the farm bill, so, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Any more questions? All right, well, thank you guys for coming forward.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Let them get their information and, uh, at this time, we have Mr. Dale Westbrook's on the road manager. Come on up, Mr. Dale. That's a little chicken feed here. A little chicken feed coming up here.
Yes, a little, uh, I have a request to get a budget amendment placed on the mark. Third, uh, agenda and amount of five million dollar potential overlay project.
Okay.
Make the motion approved?
Second.
Geez.
Yeah, you had a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by a couple of them, Mr. Brown or Mr. Johnson, whichever one you want to write down. Any questions?
Yeah, I got several.
I knew we were gonna have some questions, so I wanna make sure we had that out there.
I, I talked to you the other day, you said that we were gonna do just overlay and why not come in and do some roads that need to be milled? Because I know, I saw some of those roads.
There, there is some milling, uh, there will be milling in the, it, some of them will have to be milled.
Okay.
I asked you about that too, he said some, that, that was figured in, that some would be, uh, the milling.
There's, there's, there's a lot of, several of them that have to be milled.
So, y'all voted on the list that he gave us then, is that what we do?
Uh, I got questions on that, that's one thing I did, the question I had was before we approved this on, this is to be approved Monday, correct?
Yes.
What I'd like to do is, uh, at least ride some of mine this weekend to make sure. And I, you know, I truly believe you and Buster, well, you for sure have, uh, looked at this real close. And, uh, but there's one or two that I may have questions on and.
Yes, sir, and, and this was just, uh, that's what we're informational on what we believe that would benefit. And, and there are some roads that we thought would probably need a lot more work.
Right.
That, you know, and, uh, this is what we thought, the overlay is becoming old. Its age is, it's just, you might take more out.
Right.
And, uh, this would hopefully extend the life of these roads that we got another ten to fifteen years. Uh, and with a minimum amount of expense, whereas if we let them go for some more years.
It's gonna increase in expense.
Not only in, uh, just patching them and just general upkeep, but their, the base condition could deteriorate, you know, a good little bit. And so that's, that's where we were, we thought, you know, that this would, uh, extend the life of, of a, a good amount of roads. By doing this, this, this work.
Okay.
Well, how do we come up with this five million?
Well, I looked at the roads and also talking to Mr. Stringer and, and Ms. Laura that, uh, this was some money that, that we could. Expand without, uh, hurting the, the cash balance.
Some of this is, go ahead.
We do have some money then, I guess, that has generated, that we've been able to come up with to, uh, not, not.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we, uh, this will not create a, uh, cash flow problem at all in roads. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, one of the issues we may have, what this does is there's two million dollars already in the budget. This adds another five million to it to bring it to seven. Uh, and if we have an issue right now, maybe able to get that much done this year. Uh, and as we move along, as Dale moves along, we may come and adjust that once again. This is a starting place, uh, the list that he has here, I think that Dale and, uh, his people went out, used their experience. And he talked to his, uh, road crews and so forth and say, this is an example of roads. This is not a list that, uh, he is asking you to approve to go into the minutes and to become.
Right.
Regulation, this is an example, this is the example that he made up based on his experience. Uh, and recommendations from his road crews to give to y'all that you can look at and say, well, we got some more examples. We wanna put on here, or, and we'd like to make sure you do these first, that type of stuff.
Or just one, take one off and add one too.
As a starting place, uh, for the discussion. Uh, the, uh, motion Monday will be to increase to two million to seven million. So he can go ahead and work with the contractor to start getting those contracts out, to get their work done on these roads.
Well, I'd like to ask something about the contract, um, this amount of, uh, work. If a contractor, if contractor, contractor we are obviously contracted with right now, if they can't provide this service. In a set amount of time, what, you know, cause it, it depends on how much, I know what else they have going. Are we bound to, um, to them only?
No, no, we're not, we can, uh, go to the, uh, once they come back to us and they say they can't get this done, basically. Uh, we can go to the number two contractor on the list.
Okay, what, what time do we, I mean, what time, when the time are we giving?
We gotta have, we got to have a, a document in writing, this is what I'm going to suggest, that we have a document in writing. From our current supplier that definitively says that they are declining. A work order for a particular part of this project. If we get that, then I will be satisfied that we have the freedom to go to our second load.
But without that?
Without that, it's gonna be very problematic, if I'm the second load guy, I'm very concerned if there's not some sort of.
Right.
Official statement declining it by the load bidder.
Well, let me ask this though, when we put that out there, we're gonna put in a timeframe though, Greg, because we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to have some kind of parameters.
It's gonna be the supplier's responsibility, the, the existing supplier's responsibility to tell us that they cannot do the project. If they don't tell us that in writing, we're gonna assume that they can do the project.
So basically.
If they don't fulfill it, I know where you're going, if they don't fulfill it, then we have a basis to open up the, the contract. Whether or not they're fulfilling the terms of the contract that they're operating in.
Right.
So that'll be the hammer that's sort of hanging.
Well, not only that, I mean, you give them the whole list, they gonna go pick out the cream of the crop and say, we'll take these and send the rest over there.
You're right, and you know, the, the answer to that, that I, the only answer really that I can come up with is that's one of the benefits of being the load bidder.
But even if we went with another contractor, wouldn't he have to match the load bidder price?
Right.
Uh, that's not determined, Jay, I, I think, um, I think they are obligated to abide by the terms of their bid.
Still have to, yeah.
Well, then maybe, uh, couldn't we offer it, if we went to another, with another contractor, all, could we put that stipulation in there? Offer it that it'd have to be at this.
Jared, if they voluntarily decide to provide the service at the same cost as the load bidder, we're not gonna argue with that.
That's saving money.
But we don't have to accept it if they don't, don't want to do it at the same cost as a load bidder, correct?
That's right, there's no responsibility to move forward with that part of the project.
Okay.
Could I address this just a little bit, I've spoken to Bridgette in purchasing about what you're talking about. And, uh, she said that it would be real problematical to, to do this, you know, uh, because. We don't have any president to go back.
That's right, it's unusual. We don't normally have this level of overlay work in, in this sort of timeframe where you would choke your supplier.
This would, this would also, uh, in this amount of money, Laura and I talked and it was just, we did it in this, uh. In this amount, it keeps from having, instead of doing it in small increments to make sure that we got it done, we did it this way so that we could, uh. We wouldn't have to come back every time we run out, you know, and, and whatever's not spent goes back, if I'm correct, Ms. Laura, I'm correct. We go back into cash for next year and what we can do when we start the budget process for, uh, fourteen, fifteen. Is take this on up then and, and adjust the, the new budget to reflect in what we're trying to do here.
A continual.
Well, another thing, uh, you know, due to different conditions, this seems like a lot of projects.
It is a bear, Laura.
But due to the conditions, uh, last year, we didn't get to do as much as we normally would have done the previous year. So we've kind of rolled over some of last year's into this year, so, you know, I think that's important to, to bring out. That it's not like, it's why some, why we're in this situation, I guess, or we're doing this volume.
It's the change between Mr. Bobo and myself.
Right.
Which was to be expected, so it's not.
Well, and weather.
Right.
Weather has been a real influence on this.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's several condition, uh, reasons, the conditions created this and so it's kind of, we're playing a little catch-up at the same time. It's also a reason you got money.
And also, whatever plan we come up with is, is gonna be.
Flexible.
Yes, I mean, it's, ours is such an unexact science out there, it, it changes as the weather changes.
Sure.
So, you know, there's, it's hard to put anything in stone that, you know, this is gonna happen like this or any kind of.
What you got, Mr. Stringer?
Okay, just as an example on what, uh, Mr. Morrison was talking about on the weather, uh, the weather has been such that they could not produce asphalt.
Right.
And so yesterday, they was, the weather was not sus-. And so yesterday, they was, the weather was not susceptible to doing asphalt. Hopefully, it's gonna warm up enough here, although we may get another cold spell next week.
Right.
Uh, that they can really get out there and produce the asphalt and start working.
Okay, alright. So, is everyone, uh, any more questions on this?
Mr. President, I also want to just throw out there, one of the nice parts about having this job full-time is I actually have time to think about stuff like this.
Right.
And so, I've been thinking about this issue of choking our existing supplier down with trying to produce
Right.
way above, it might start affecting quality.
Right.
That type of thing, trying to hit certain, you know, supplier levels and that type of thing, it may be unreachable. Um, I want to, I wanna continue to explore this issue of how best to do this, and, uh, one of the things that I wanna look at is whether or not maybe this is the type of situation where we can separate this particular overlay project as a separate project for us to consider. Maybe we could consider opening it back up and, uh, receiving bids on these, this project and this work, and give us another opportunity to get back into the market to see if there's something that we can realize on this.
A better, it's not like a better, a better cost. So, what you're talking about, like, uh, open it back up, like, maybe get better quote on this?
Have this separated out as, as a particular project to engage in, so that we can consider the potential.
If it could happen.
I'm not suggesting we have the ability to do that, but it's, it's been on my mind to think about and to look at and study. So, I pitch it out there, it's something for you guys to also be thinking about.
Okay.
It may be something we don't wanna do.
You know, rather than throwing money at it, it'd be nice if we actually sat down and planned out which roads we wanted to address first and get an idea of how much we were gonna spend based off of that, rather than reversing that and throwing five million out there and trying to squeeze as many roads we can in it.
That's what I was gonna say, is if, if you let this as a separate contract, the roads are gonna have to be nailed down, there won't be any, "Let's take this one out, let's put this one in."
That's right, that's exactly right.
So, we'll have to have that nailed down prior to letting that project...
I think we need to discuss that.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah.
Do what?
It's just an idea to consider.
Also, Craig, I mean, isn't it logical thing that a contractor knows on an annual basis how much work they can physically get done? And we could take the number of miles that we're planning on getting done and come up with a project, and whether it's ten, twelve roads, and then we could break off, you know, have three projects for twelve roads in each one of them. Is that not feasible?
Yep, yes, sir, I think the, the sky's the limit on how to achieve this. We just need to really consider what is the best way to handle this, the most timely, the most efficient. My biggest concern is, is that you're asking one supplier in particular to shoulder a responsibility that they are not capable of shouldering.
Well, I'm not so sure that they knew that this special project was actually coming out whenever they, right.
What are we calculating per mile on spending for overlay?
I'm sure that's gonna vary some, because some's gonna be, uh, have to cover, uh, mill, uh, milling in there, and some not.
It varies.
So, it's gonna be hard to nail that down.
Well, just for standard overlay, without milling?
It's kind of an average on a twenty-foot road, minimum, uh, minimum inch and a half overlay. Uh, I figured around eighty thousand, and that's, that's for just minimal pre-leveling, that's just, uh, as far as, now, that's the...
Just for overlay?
That would be what, you, you know, the contractor, for him to come in and what pre-leveling he does, and, and then his inch and a half minimum. Uh, that's not, that's not, doesn't include any work we as a road department would have to do to prepare this road.
I know, just bringing that up.
Oh, this inch and a half, or this overlay.
Alright.
Uh, I might add one other comment, we were, the, the present contractor we have, I've mentioned to him that we might, uh, increase, you know, the amount of work we had to do, and, uh, I gave him a figure somewhere in this neighborhood, and he did not, they didn't really lynch too hard at it, so, you know, as far as money, it, I would think what would constrict it more than anything is probably the road department's ability to stay, you know...
Stay ahead?
Yes, and, and I can't promise that, 'cause we've not worked with these people, but, you know, we just started work with them, and weather conditions have not been the greatest to see, oh, but they have worked, you know, seemed like when they could, they did have a scheduled plant shutdown, they just halted them, but that was, I was told up front, they were hoping to get us out of the way before they plant shutdown came in effect, but we had all that bad weather with ice, and, and, you know, these don't need to be putting down asphalt, let's empty your pipe. We're not gonna get the kind of work that we need.
And none of these so wet either.
You know, so it's, you know, it's a bad time of the year, but, uh, they made a, you know, pretty good initial attempt, I thought, to, uh, but I did kinda go over, uh, the subject with them that we may have, you know, 'cause this was, it's time I talked to them, this had already been mentioned.
Right.
And so, you know, I don't know, uh, and if we do, if you do start putting it out in bid packets, so to speak, you may find that your money doesn't go quite as far.
Yeah.
That's true, and I may be anticipating problems that aren't there.
Well, I do, I do, really, a, a lot of them, if you go, uh, you're, uh, and you can look at the difference in the, and Mr. Parker might be able to help me here that I'm not telling something I shouldn't, but when you go to constricting contractors a lot, and, you know, they have to incorporate that, that variable, let's say, what might be into their, uh, into their bid. Where here is, they're just selling us a ton of asphalt at X dollars to be placed on the road, so it's, it takes a lot of their, uh, it's good money for them, 'cause it's pretty simple money, but it, it takes a lot, they don't have to worry near as much about, you know, "Am I gonna miss something here? Do I need to add something there?" and then, "Have I got?" So, it, it probably would affect the cost a good little bit.
Yep.
I just wanted to, you know...
Well, how much did we budget this year? Two million, you said?
Well, that's what was just in the initial budget.
That's what, that's what's left in this year.
The fact that we're back here talking about it is not a surprise. We've got the money in, in the bank, in the roads, uh, to do this, uh, and so...
Well, we got that and a lot more too, you know, so...
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, how much do we budget annually for doing road work?
It all depends. Jay, what we usually do is take the amount of money that is gonna come in in a given year and balance that up to the expenses, and so it varies with each year, so what this would be is just dipping into your cash reserve, which is healthy, in your road department. Um, to make up, there was about two million last year that was not spent, and it would be, um, and I believe what we had in the budget this year was a little bit over too.
It was a touch.
Yeah, and it would be adding two more to that, and, you know, um, from last year and a little bit more.
Right.
And like you said, if this can't get done, then it just goes back into cash.
And we might, if I might, one other thing, we will have a new bid in Ju-, the first of July. So, there could be a potential that we could have two contractors working, if the present contractor doesn't get the six-month bid
That's true.
for the, uh, the next six months.
Right.
You know, we could, we could have two for a while, it wouldn't be with a two-month period.
Well, what would you do, Dale? Just give our current load bidder roads, and as he finish them, you get more roads?
And then the more he does, the more he'll get, you know, and we'll just, you know, we can see where they go from there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Alright.
Any more questions on this?
Nope.
Alright.
So, this is, this is to approve it today?
No, this is gonna be approved on, uh, Monday. This is just talking about it.
Okay, well, I'll, it's wrong my motion then.
So, at what point do you come up with the roads?
Well, I guess you need to get out there this weekend, make sure you got your roads, you saw the list of roads.
Well, I, I think that we're, we're back to that. I don't think that there will be a point at the time you, uh, talk to the, uh, contractor and say, "Here are the roads we want done right now."
Right.
Uh, but as far as I think, actually putting into a regulation, that these are the roads that are gonna be done four or five months from now.
Right.
Uh, I don't think that we wanna do that.
Yeah, this is not hard.
But as we, this is a list, a list of roads that y'all, road manager, crews, will work and say, "Here's the ones we wanna do first." Uh, or maybe even add others on, and as we work down the list.
Right.
Uh, but as, this is an example list, uh, three months from now, there may be another road that needs to be put on the list for some reason that, not known right now.
Right. Well, in his last...
It's always a work in progress.
Right.
In your last statements, said any comments you, uh, you have will be appreciated, so, well, I'm sure you'll be here, all five of us, so, thank you, Dale, Buster. Alright, number seven, Craig Slay, Board Attorney, back up.
Mr. President, first item, uh, under the Work Session section for me is a discussion of the use of the Greenfield Community Center by the Mississippi Alcohol Safety Education Program. Uh, Ms. Blythe McCants and Mr. Bill Henderson are here today representing Macep. Appreciate them being here. Uh, I'll turn your attention to the document that is attached to your work session agenda, a, a license agreement for the use of county facility. Uh, this is an agreement that I put together, uh, to address the request of Macep, uh, to use the Greenfield Community Center as a location for conducting alcohol safety education classes. Um, I'm gonna allow either Ms. McCants or Henderson or both to come forward to, uh, explain exactly what Macep is and does, and, uh, why it is that they would like to, to have access to the Greenfield Community Center as a facility, and then I'll address with the board, to the extent that there's any questions about it, the actual agreement that has been proposed, and some, just some information that you need to know about that.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Uh, Macep is a, it's, uh, created by statute, by legislation, uh, it's been in existence since nineteen seventy-two. Everyone in the state who is convicted of a first offense DUI is ordered by the court, or it should be Justice Court or Municipal Court, to attend the class as required under law, license, driver's license is suspended until they do complete the class. We are a part of the Social Science Research Center at Mississippi State University, that's where the program started back in seventy-two, and it's remained as a unit of the SSRC at Mississippi State. We have forty-one, I'm Operations Coordinator for the program, by the way, uh, we have forty-one sites all over the state where we conduct the class. We have had, uh, a site in Pearl that, uh, we were meeting in a building, uh, just, uh, on Old Brandon Road there, not far from the, uh, uh, Pearl Municipal Building, uh, Police Department, and we had to leave because unbeknownst to us, the rent on the building was being paid by federal grant, federal money, and we were told that as a state agency, we could not be in the building that was being paid for by federal money. I didn't argue, of course, but, uh...
You tried, huh?
Anyway, that's why we had to leave. And it happened very quickly, no warning, uh, and so we were out of a spot, uh, three weeks ago. We had a class going on there, we did disperse those people out to other classes so they could finish, but we need another site, and, uh, uh, we'd like to be in the Pearl, uh, Rankin County area somewhere, so, uh, this site's been proposed for us, and, um, looks like it would work for us, so we just appreciate, you know, being allowed to go there.
Okay. Yeah, I talked to, uh, Ms. Blythe, she, uh, she and I talked, I guess about a week and a half ago, and, uh, told me the circumstances, and, you know, trying to put, uh, put all the equation together, trying to find a good suitable spot, you know, that's, is one of the places that I kinda recommended, and I, and I wanted you guys to be able to look at and see if that would, uh, if that would help, and then I, you know, talked to the board and attorney to see if, uh, if they would be obliged to help you guys out, so that's how this kinda transitioned. So, does that look like a pretty suitable place? Have y'all, have y'all been out that way?
I have not been out there, uh, I don't know exactly, you know, we rely on...
But you know exactly where it's at, though, right?
What you described.
Right. It's not too far from Pearl, I mean, it's in the, you know, it's not downtown Pearl, but it's just on the outskirts there, so, but it's in the general city.
You know where the prison is, it's right there, I mean, it's kinda half a mile from prison.
It's right at the prison, right, basically.
And the highway patrol office.
Yeah, we know generally where it is, right, pinpointed it exactly, we don't know about where it is.
Right, okay. Alright, any questions?
We, I wanted to hang on, 'cause we have one other issue to discuss beyond just this community center.
Right.
But before we get to that, let me walk you guys through the
Okay.
the agreement that's been proposed and the changes that have been requested. Uh, first and foremost, when I drew the agreement up, I had it structured so that it was between the county and the program, Macep, which is an arm of Mississippi State, and so, uh, the first change that was made was to reflect that the actual licensee of the facility, the user of the facility is gonna be Mississippi State and not Macep, which changes a lot of the need for some of the language that I've inserted in here, as opposed to it being an agreement between the county and a, either a for-profit or nonprofit corporation. It's now an agreement between the county and a political subdivision of the state of Mississippi, which is what Mississippi State is, so that indemnity provisions don't need to be there, uh, co-insurance provisions don't need to be in there, uh, cost-sharing arrangements, that type of thing, that doesn't need to be in there, and so...
All your work just got scratched.
All of that stuff that I could've made good money on if I was still in private practice, had to be thrown away. Uh, aside from that, th- there are basic responsibilities that are put on the program for using the facility, very basic. We want it to be limited in the number of folks that actually attend that class there. We have a space issue from parking especially. We share that space with the Monterey Fire Department, and it's gonna be important that we don't have an issue of our ingress and egress being blocked, and so we've asked to keep that to forty class attendees max, and, um, my understanding is that we're gonna be able to do that, so that won't be an issue. Um, each party is given the ability, uh, to cancel the agreement on ninety days' notice, either side can. Um, if for some reason, uh, we see that the use of the facility by Macep, by the class, is going to present a real significant problem for our use of the facility or for the fire department, then we have a thirty-day termination right there. We don't anticipate there being any issues, but just in case it's there. Uh, we're asking, uh, the program to make sure that the facility is kept neat and clean and tidy. We've asked them not to use any sort of permanent signage of any kind, just use a, you know, temporary sign to mark where the class is gonna be and that type of thing. We wanna be neighborly, uh, to our folks that are out there, and we are right across the street from Live Oak Subdivision, so we wanna try to make sure that we're, uh, neighborly there, but those are some basics, and, um, I, I don't know that there's anything in particular that you guys need to know about. There is, obviously, there's no cost for their use of the facility, um, and that's primarily because we're talking about a mandated program that's operated through the state of Mississippi, and it's court-ordered, and so we feel like it's a appropriate use of the facility to allow them to be able to do that at no cost. Ms. McCants has handed me a listing of all of their locations all over the state of Mississippi, and they're pretty much in about every community that you can imagine, and so, uh, there are two, uh, locations in Brandon, both of which, uh, utilize the, uh, Rankin County, the old courthouse, the justice courtroom, and that's the next thing that I wanna talk to you guys about. If y'all are okay with, um, with our including this agreement concerning the Greenfield Community Center, uh, that'll be, I believe we got that, is that on March third? Have we got that in there? Uh, to be approved? I don't remember. Ms. Janice, and I apologize, I just don't remember what we decided to do on that.
Uh, Ms. McCants, that is on Thursday nights, is, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that won't even, uh, interfere with, uh, any type of, uh, elections or anything like that, so that's great. You know, we won't have to worry about anything like that, so...
I'm glad you mentioned that. The agreement says that if there is something currently scheduled
Right.
for the community center, then they understand that we're not gonna be able to knock those folks out.
If it's already turned.
We'll have to accommodate that.
Right.
But once we have this agreement in place, they will have that Thursday night slot.
Right.
Uh, until they don't need the facility anymore under the agreement.
Gotcha.
They'll be responsible, go ahead.
No, we just had it on today for discussion, and then we're gonna decide.
Yes, ma'am. If y'all are comfortable with, we can, we can get it on, but I, I'm assuming I can get this point of privilege from Ms. Janice, we can get it on the docket for March three.
If, if Ms. Janice is okay with that, and the board is okay with that, I'd like to see it put on the, uh, uh, March the third minutes.
Sounds great.
I got, I got a question, uh...
I got a question. Uh, did, did I miss or did you mention about who's gonna clean it up?
The, the program, Macep, will be responsible to, to make sure that it's cleaned up after use.
Right. Cause the main thing is, it's, uh, you know, it's out in the, out in the area and the ones that we do have doing the cleaning of the facilities is our inmates and that's not a weekly, uh, I guess, they probably go out there once a week, but it would be, um, you know, it's checked on quite frequently, but not as much as this corridor around here, so.
We will leave it clean, I promise you that.
Yes, sir. I, I know, I know you will.
Just probably no, no problem, but if anything is spilled or, you know, left on the floor, we will clean it up, I promise you that.
Well, I definitely have, uh, uh, Ms. McCants's number, so I can assure her. So.
Mr. President, if, while we've got Ms. McCants here and Ms. Henderson here, uh, the, I, I want Ms. McCants to come forward and explain. I've mentioned briefly the Justice Court, the old, the Justice Court courtroom that's being used by Macep in the old courthouse and an issue has sort of arisen recently that we wanted to address with the board.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to explain this. It's a little convoluted, so I guess maybe giving you some background would be the easiest to follow. We've been in the, um, courthouse here in Brandon for years. I'm not sure, Mr. Henderson, you know how long. We just, it's been for a long, long time. Um, but Tim Lawless, who of course is, was with Rankin County, um, Sheriff's Department, was one of our instructors and was with us for a long time and he retired. So, subsequently, we have hired, uh, Tripp Bayless, who has been, um, an assistant with us now for three, four years. And, um, he was assisting us in our Brandon. We have two classes now in Brandon because we were growing and so we had to expand. And of course, that courtroom, um, as you know, it's not really, um, set up for small groups, which of course our program, we thought is definitely more effective when we have smaller, um, groups, so we can do great work, et cetera. Um, so anyway, we split the class and because of that, of course, we had to hire a new, um, instructor and assistant. So, we've got two instructors and two assistants, one for each set. The issue has come up, um, because the instructor that we have hired in the second class is not a Rankin County employee. So, also our, our assistant, who is, um, retired from the DOC, he, um, is of course not a, an employee of Rankin County. So, the issue, of course, is access to the courthouse. And access, of course, because it's keyless entry and, um, getting in, getting out, just to make sure that, that everything is secured there. So, that's the issue.
And, uh, to the sheriff's here, and so to his credit, and I'm appreciative of this, it would be necessary, since this board has responsibility for the courthouse, for this board to address the issue of the access for the purpose of their programming. On that particular one, I'm assuming Tripp can get in and out with no issues. It's the other class. So, we would just simply need for this board to, uh, determine and to officially find that they should be provided with access and sort that out, however that needs to be sorted out. I've noticed I'm looking over at my IT director, so I can be sure I don't get too far afield here. But, uh, getting in and out of the facility is what we need to address.
Okay. Um, so you have two different classes in the same location?
Right, I do. And I brought for you all these, um, this is a copy of our master schedule, just so you'll see where all we're located. And you'll notice, of course, that we have two classes in Brandon, um, one that meets on Tuesday night and one on Wednesday night.
And you can't get Tripp to, to them all, huh?
Well, uh, you know, I've talked with him about that for a time. He actually, he substituted for us for a long time and the issues come up now because we've hired this new instructor, um, who's actually, um, an attorney by profession, but he's come back to do some, some, uh, to be certified as a counselor and a treatment person. Um, so that's why we have hired, we've hired him and I've said, cause he's not affiliated with Rankin County.
If y'all determine it, um, I'll be happy to make a card for, for one of their staff if, if that's what y'all wanna do. And we can give them, um, access to the old courthouse for the times listed in their class. Because all of the offices in the old courthouse are locked up at night. So, even with access to come and go through that, that east door, they can't get into any offices. So, I don't have a security concern myself of the offices internally.
So, they'll just be allowed to get in the court, I mean, in the courtroom, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One person?
Well, that's up to y'all. That's up to y'all. I said one, but, you know, whatever y'all determine.
Sheriff, have you got, uh, any concerns on that?
The only issue before they have a death threat, somebody care about that time because there's not a death threat barrier and that, plus they don't approve somebody and then it's not top of the judges.
Right.
Of course, it's court state and all that stuff, yeah.
Right.
So, that would sort of make that a death threat.
Yeah. Um, do you, I mean, do we see any kind of concerns where it could?
Rusty, you said everything is locked up, right?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Till you get up there, they can't walk around.
That's correct.
All the office doors and.
That's correct, but the sheriff's got a good point. Uh, clearing that with the judges may be a good idea as well, before we do that.
Or just notify them.
Correct. Correct. Whatever, whatever y'all, again, that'll be y'all's determination.
If you ask for permission, you may not get it.
Yeah, but they're the ones that made it flash. That's true.
They're the, they're the court ordered, mandated. Um, so do we need to touch base? At least get everyone on the same page, make sure that all of this is.
What, what could be done is that you guys could go ahead and prove the access, continue the on discussion being had with the judges and the judges' court staff.
Okay. So, we can, uh, put this on, uh, actually on Monday, not Monday, but also?
That's right.
Okay. And by then, let's see, today is Thursday. Should be able to make, circle the wagons a little bit to see if there's any concerns that may come up.
Correct. I'll, I'll email Jessica Massey since I sit back down.
Okay.
What about the handicap? Handicap?
Yes, sir. Uh, you know.
Yeah, we can get it there in the time zone, but that employee will have to walk down there and, and walk them up the elevator, anybody that's handicapped. That'll be what'll have to be done.
Well, they did that now, didn't they? All the time forward, so.
So, yeah, that'll, that'll be just something to keep in mind.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the same program that Ron Senet used to be part of?
Ron Senet is?
I'm not sure whether we ought to, how are we on answer that? Depends on how you know Ron Senet.
He, he goes to church with constituents.
He is our friend.
It is, not directly, but it's, it's associated with the Office of Highway Safety where he worked and he's a good friend of ours, a good supporter and, uh, so not directly, but kinda.
Well, you ought to be in politics the way you kinda answered that, though.
Well, y'all, if y'all know Ron, you know what I'm talking about.
Exactly.
He's a good guy and he's a lot of fun and he's helped us a lot and he's very interested in everything to do with highway safety.
Wonderful.
So, he's a good man.
Well, thank y'all for what y'all do. We'll, we'll work on this and get this, uh, get this pushed through. I think we can work together.
And as far as, um, just one more question, just as far as us being able to access the next weekend access.
Yes, ma'am.
Still need to be, um, we need to be able to get in there.
Yes, ma'am. We'll just need to get with, uh, Ms. Janus and, uh, if you've got, uh, whenever you stop out front out here, get Ms. Janus's, uh, uh, all of her contacts and let's get that moving so we can get you access to that. So, it won't be a problem. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right.
Mr. President, there really isn't any need to go over.
Review of them.
There's just two public hearings that are gonna be sent to me on Monday.
Gotcha. Thank you. Colonel Stringer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Now that we've done the easy stuff. Uh, the first item, um, under the county administrator is, uh, approval pay request number seven for construction at the FEMA safe room to Coleman Hammond's construction in the amount of one hundred sixty thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy cents. And the authority to issue the check. This was just left off of the consent agenda in the last meeting.
Really?
And so.
I make a motion we approve this. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next item is discussing impossible action, if you desire to take it, to enter into a three-year agreement with AT&amp;T regarding fiber lines and take a cost, uh, advantage of a cost saving on those connections. Uh, Rusty, uh, will explain this one.
We, we use AT&amp;T for all our fiber connections currently to JDC, EOC, our internet and all that, uh, with the state, through AT&amp;T and the state in agreement with them. They have released a new agreement, okay, that will allow us a considerable, very large call savings if we sign a three-year LOA with them. Um, to be honest with you, you know, we, we've tried other companies outside of AT&amp;T. We've all seen how that works out. And Mississippi AT&amp;T is going to be the primary provider. Um, I highly suggest we take advantage of this.
Okay. All right.
Is three years the maximum we can get?
No, three years is the minimum. I brought you, I brought you the minimum.
We go with a, a longer time, can we get a bigger savings?
Absolutely.
Hey, let's do a ten-year deal then.
Yeah, I can bring, uh, I can bring.
Can we do that, Craig?
Bring alternate agreements if you want me to.
That's a good question, Jay. Um, you know, there are carve-outs for specific, um, services. Uh, one that comes to mind is, is, uh, waste management. That, uh, that is accepted from the general rule that a board cannot bind a successor board.
Right.
To an agreement. Um, and off the top of my head, Jay, I'm not a hundred percent sure if this falls into one of those exceptions. I kinda think that it does, but I wanna be sure.
But even if we did this one, wouldn't this one bind us into another, a board also? A three-year?
What, yes, sir. Exactly. The three-year that's being proposed right now would actually put you into.
Right.
The next board. Bear in mind that just because that rule's there, it doesn't mean that the contract's invalidated. It just simply means that the successor board has the ability to, uh, decline or continue under that contract.
Right.
Um, and, and it, it would have to live with, uh, the provisions of that contract that might have an impact on that decision. So, if, you know, it's not a foregone conclusion that the next board would just simply not agree to continue under the contract.
Right.
But when you start talking about an agreement that could put you out into two boards out into the future.
Well, if you went with a, I mean, and, and I like what Rusty said, if you come back with maybe a five-year, then you're still in, just in the next terms.
And note, this agreement's coming from the state.
That's right.
Uh, it's written, AT&amp;T wrote the agreement, but the state has handed it to us on, on, on their behalf. So, it's, it's like a supplemental like we have with Cesspire and, and others.
Yeah, uh, it, it may be advisable, see if you can go and come back with maybe a five and a seven and a ten. If we, you know, and might let Craig look into that and see what kind of substantial savings if we can then get even increased.
Okay. I can, I can definitely work on that.
My gut tells me that this, that this is one of the type that is accepted.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Tell Rusty just to do what he needs to do, cause all of us are gonna be back.
That's a good one. All right.
Your attitude, sir.
Okay. Uh, the next item is, uh, to discuss the volunteer fire insurance premiums, which there's been a small increase in. Uh, Laura's looked into it and I think she has a, uh, suggestion on how we handle this.
Um, I've had one fire department come to me asking why the increase in this year and it happens to be on their property. That's the biggest increase anybody got is on the buildings that they own. Um, I know that others have expressed concern, maybe to some we've all about an increased premium, um, that they've received. I was just gonna give you a little history of, probably back to two thousand and two. We pay probably fifty percent of those premiums, the county did, and we bill the fire departments for the remaining portion of it. Over the years, that has been increased, um, just incrementally along until several years ago. They were assuming one hundred percent of the insurance for their department, which includes their property and their, um, crime policy and their umbrella policy and on all their equipment that they have also. If it is the pleasure of the board, what we could do, last year, I didn't have any problems from any of the departments saying that it was a burden to pay that. So, what we could do is go back to the method that we once used to pay a portion of it, using last year as our benchmark. And then taking this year, the increase that we had, which was seven percent, and the county picking that up and staying at that, that benchmark and us paying the difference until such time as we needed to revisit it. Um, that, that's just y'all's call. I know that several of you had some questions and concerns about.
And so, this year, they, they wouldn't, they actually wouldn't ex- experience an increase when they got their insurance rebate.
I have sent out the letters requesting their insurance premium amount and I've had three of the fire departments that have actually paid. The same three that generally pay as soon as they get their bill. Um, what I could do is I could send out a follow-up letter to them explaining the method that we're going to use and let them know what their decrease would be, um, with, you know, or actually the new premium would be for this year for those that have not paid. And then these three that have, I could either reimburse them at the end of the year when we do their insurance, their, their, well, they don't get the insurance rebate money anymore. Their, um, just their allocation at the end of the year. But this is just basically open for discussion now because I know that it's y'all that has some calls from your departments.
Well, then, this wasn't the first year that they've experienced an increase according to the gentleman's or the.
No, it's not. I'm, I'm sure that every year with just about like any kind of insurance, you, you get an increase, some years more than other. I do know that last year, um, the insurance had a, an adjustment just from the insurance company on the way that they rated properties and everybody's property was adjusted. Not that they had any additions to or any, had built anything new. It was just an adjustment from the insurance company on their structure of how they do buildings. And when this particular fire department came in to see me the other day, asking about their increase, which was approximately three hundred dollars, um, in looking at across all of the departments, that's basically, unless they have new equipment or additional equipment of any kind that's increased it, most of it's on the property is what's increased their premium.
Didn't we approve this last month to renew it?
Yes, we did. The, the insurance is in place. It just takes from insurance renewal until they give me a breakdown of what each fire department's cost is and then I get the letters out to them. It just takes a little while. This actually renewed November one and it's usually January before I can get a letter out to the fire departments with their information and asking them to check their equipment. Make sure it's what they have and what they want, it's your and all that.
Well, did Guy and them do their due diligence to seek other proposals and, I mean, we didn't just go with the same company?
No, they, I think they went with a, I went, they went with a, um, they did, they shopped it again.
Yes, they always shop our insurance and all.
My understanding is this is the only company that writes this kind of insurance in the state.
Yes, it is.
Few, uh, very few of them, I think you're right.
Yes, it is. VFIS, um, there's another name associated with that too, but they're the ones that do it continually each year. Most people, they don't even wanna touch it. I don't even know if we got any other quotes when they put it out.
So, basically what you're saying, instead of them having an increase from last year, we basically supplement whatever it is, the overage and then let them have the same coverage what they had last year.
Right, at the same premium.
At the same premium.
Right, and we, which happens to be seven percent.
Well, you're gonna be opening a can of worms then. What you gonna do next year?
Whatever we gotta do to continue to provide volunteer fire service in the rural areas of the county.
I can assure you.
We're talking about, you know, we have a contract with these people to, to provide fire service in these areas. And, uh, you know, with fuel increase, fuel cost increases and all the other things, most of them are operating on a shoestring budget anyway. And then when they, you know, experience another five hundred dollar increase, year after year after year, it just continues to eat away at their budget. Sell more chicken.
And another thing, yeah, another thing, Jay, um, the problem that a lot of them run into is, uh, uh, getting recruits, which, uh, because of some of the, um,
Issues.
gas situations.
Yep.
And, and so they're really having problems and what's affecting, I know I have one particular one that's affecting, that's because they don't have enough numbers. Their, uh, uh, fire rating. They can't get the fire rating down from a ten to an eight because they have to, they're required to have enough, so much manpower. And they're going on a recruiting campaign, trying to get more, doing what they can and, you know, if you're not around these guys, I'm telling you, you just can't help, you don't have the appreciation that the things they do just strictly volunteer. But the, the recruitment is, uh, way off from what you have. You don't have a lot of new recruits. You got some same ones, you're trying to keep, hang on to them. But, um, the gas situation, uh, is, is serious because if they're, you know, a lot of them have, uh, are okay, they can leave work. And so, they have to drive to a scene of an accident or a fire, whatever, whatever emergency it is. And this gas deal, so, so some of them are looking at that from that side.
Well, how is the insurance premium reflect on recruits and gas they use?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't reflect on that, but he's just talking about additional, uh, costs to the.
It basically comes down to economy, as the economy has changed, even the cost for the volunteer, when you get down to volunteers. That's exactly what it is. I mean, these volunteers out there make no money, they go out there and risk their lives every day. And they depend on either the state or the local to try to help to offset those costs. And that's a service that we have to basically try to help them, so we don't have full-time fire departments out there.
Well, they get up two o'clock in the morning, go to a fire, come back in, had to be a work at seven.
Well, I, you know, if we do this, we're just gonna be taking money out of the fire fund, so we're gonna be cutting it to other places.
I don't know what the answer is, I just know you keep, uh.
Chipping away at it.
They're chipping away at it and they, uh, you know, what they make of their little drives, uh, selling chicken plates and whatever.
It really kills them around.
It's a small amount, mostly it's a PR, probably a PR in the community to let the community, uh, try to draw support there. And that goes back to what we discussed at the meeting, that meeting the other night, um. Uh, when you were there on Slay about the, um, situation about, I, I wanted to touch on that while we got the fire departments. Yeah, because that's back to that public relations with the community that supports that fire department. And these individuals have to see at church. And everything, and on a daily basis, and they're, they're, again, they're volunteers. So, I, somewhere in here, I would like you to, uh, like to know where we are, what you know about any of that.
Of course, that volunteer also, when he goes with that gas pump, it's one price, and when he comes back by, it's another price. And it's his gas in that tank, it answers the call for me and you.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
That he never sees, just from personal.
You know, like, uh, in California, they have private businesses that bill individuals whenever they go to a fire call. Is that a possibility we could do here?
I think that's been discussed, I. I'm open to, to hear, but.
Well, I know we've talked about paying volunteers on the call, but I'm talking about billing the, the house that catches on fire.
Oh.
Generally speaking, they're, they're relying on the fire insurance coverage.
Yeah.
On the house, paying that cost, Jay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I don't know, but my assumption would be that they, generally, they look to the insurance company to pick that up. Rather than the actual homeowner.
Well, could we get the insurance company to pay our volunteer fire department for going to a call?
Yes, sir. In fact, I'm, I'm aware that there are some fire departments, I believe, I may be wrong about this. But I think there are some fire departments that have started engaging in, uh, billing for. Not for fires, but for car accidents.
Hazardous spills.
That, yes, sir, exactly, that's a good example right there. Uh, where they have had some success in, in directly dealing with the insurance carrier for the responsible party. If it's a car wreck, in having some of their costs recovered.
Well, if any insurance is involved, can we bill them for services rendered?
And Jay, you're saying, can we, and I think.
Well, I'm talking about the volunteer fire departments. Can they bill the insurance companies for services rendered?
Yeah, as a private nonprofit corporation, with no restriction under our contract that I'm aware of. I've looked at it a number of times, I haven't seen anything that prohibits it on our side, the fire department. I don't know why they couldn't.
How would they enforce it though? If, if they bill it, I mean, how would they enforce the, the paying it?
Well, they come up with a substantiation of the actual cost of, uh, we do it with the road department, by the way. So, we have somebody that drives off down the median and knocks a, knocks one of our lights over in the county. We work with the road department, we come up with the cost associated with replacing that light, the light itself, and the equipment, the labor, et cetera. We come up with a cost, we itemize that cost, present it to the insurance company and ask them to pay it. And my experience has been that they'll pay it.
That's a good, um.
The, the answer is, I don't know of any reason why they couldn't do that, Jay. They may be limited. In, in how, uh, logistically, how well they know how to do that.
Yeah.
And that's your job.
I was fixing to say, then you'd almost.
You're now the attorney for every volunteer fire department too. And the village clerk, and the insurance guy.
But you certainly couldn't try to bill the homeowner.
Perry, I think you said that.
House is burned, I'm sending you a bill. Yeah, that'd go big.
Well, I mean, if you send to the insurance company.
No, I'm saying, if, yeah, word it as the insurance company.
Yeah.
Not the homeowner.
Hold on just a second, let me hasten to add one point about that. Uh, this is not Louisiana where, where they have direct actions against insurance carriers. In Mississippi, you don't have a direct action against the insurance carrier. So, if the volunteer fire department notifies the carrier that they want that claim paid, the carrier says, no thanks. The recourse is not against the insurance company, it's against the homeowner.
Yep, they'll just put it back over.
It's a PR issue.
Well, at that point, they could waive it.
Yeah, right.
Yes, sir.
Cause I'm, I'm supportive of that one.
Right.
Unfortunately, Jay, the carriers talk to each other.
Uh.
Yeah.
Don't, don't answer that, cause they're not gonna pursue it.
Right.
So, it's almost a moot point, no matter what.
Unless you're willing to pursue the claim, so that all the carriers realize they're serious about getting it recovered. It's gonna be a problem.
Well, it might be worth looking into, for sure.
Would that, that'd be something that, uh, and I know it's probably too late now, but is that something that our state legislature could address next year?
Yeah, that's what I was just finna say, good.
Along with the insurance commissioner?
Start from that.
Well. So that we are like Louisiana in that respect.
That may be a fight that is, uh, if you can imagine, the carriers would not like that at all.
It'd be worth a, it'd worth a try, and I think it'd be good to, um, I think it's a great point, at least to show, uh, our support.
I understand.
Yeah, I don't care if they like it.
That'll be, that'll be a pretty hefty fight.
Well, let's, uh, let's go to the map.
There's a lot of arguments for not doing that. You can imagine, it's kinda hard for an insurance, a nameless, faceless insurance company to get much of a free trial, a, a fair trial. On an issue of negligence where the jury knows, uh, going out of the box, it's not gonna cost the guy that caused the problem any money. It's gonna cost that insurance company. So, there's some policy reasons for not having that type of rule, Louisiana for whatever reason.
Yeah, but I mean, this is just helping to, to supplement the, the fire department, the call that's there. That may have saved the house, to keep it from being a total loss, that, which saved the insurance company.
Right, I agree with that.
That's a good assignment for the attorney.
Had a little.
That's just one more thing for the attorney.
Yeah. Come up with a recommendation to us.
Sorry, man.
All right.
Now, they, the other.
Oh, uh, well, as you know, we have asked, uh, our local representative to look for. At the point in time that we addressed this with our representative, we had missed the deadline, it was beyond the deadline for new legislation to be introduced. So, we've asked our representatives to be on the lookout for an opportunity to s- to get us an amendment in there. That will authorize this board on a finding that it's in the best interest of all the citizens of the county to do so. To repair damages caused by our volunteer fire departments. In emergency operations on property, whether it be the property, the homeowner that they're there to fix, or a neighbor, or whatever.
Right.
So, we've asked for that amendment to be positioned. As of today, I have not heard back whether that's a possibility. I need to circle back around by that where we stand.
I think it's good because the, you know, if we start running into some of the ones like you and I met with, they're gonna be asking, and I'd like to know.
Yes.
Something.
We've made the request, and we've, we, and, and, and the request has been well received by our delegation.
Okay.
They feel like it's an important thing.
Good.
I don't mean house lobbish.
So, how do y'all want me to handle this? What's, what's the pleasure?
Oh, you kind of got off there.
On, on handle like this.
Oh, well, I mean, I'm.
Yes, sir, it's around nine thousand dollars.
Since it, since it used to be fifty percent, now it's down to zero, and you're proposing seven, why don't we go ten?
What, what the proposal was, Mr. Johnson, is just to take, uh, the fire department paid the premium last year. Just take last year's amount as the base. This year, we may have to address this again. Uh, this year, and then we take and pay the additional nine thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh, you know, which would be added on, they paid the same amount they paid last year. And then, uh, this board pays the additional nine thousand this year.
Right, where do you take action on that today?
Would that money come out of general funds, or would it come out of fire?
It would come out of fire. And actually, the insurance premium has already been paid by the county, and then I request reimbursement from the fire departments. Most of them don't pay us during the year, what they do is wait till the end of the year when I give them the allocation.
Right.
And we just subtract it from that amount that they owe us. Now, I'll refer to Craig on this, if he thinks we need anything, I can only tell you in the past, we never had any kind of motion or anything in place. It was just something, a, a directive, you know.
Well, it's budgeted, so we can move on.
Is it budgeted?
It's in the fire funds, y'all need to decide about that allocation.
That's what I'm saying, is that budgeted for that?
Well, the amount of insurance was budgeted that we paid, which we've already paid, and it's also on the receipt side that we would recoup this money.
Okay.
So, it would be an additional expense of around nine thousand, a little over, to the county fire fund to absorb this amount. I don't know what it'll be next year, depending on what kind of percentage insurance rate increase that we have. And what you'll have is over the years, it will grow, and then you'll, at some point, you'll have to determine an adjustment.
Okay.
Again, you know, depending on what you wanna pay.
Down, is it?
I, I don't think so.
I don't think it'll go down, but I do agree that we need to do something to help on that. So, do we need to take action on that then, is it, with a, okay. Um, you wanna have action today, or wanna put it on Monday?
Do it on.
Monday?
Mondays.
Okay.
Jenny, your, your list is growing.
All right, Dee.
I don't think I have to make any editorial comment to introduce this one, except to say election coding.
That's all you need to say.
Talking about ESNS and us and, uh, election machines. And Rusty has, uh.
Everybody's favorite topic.
Rusty has done some homework on this, so he'll present it.
We, y'all should have, um, spreadsheet in your packet. Um, you know, every time we've discussed this, and we've discussed coding versus, um, uh, still in the code, we have only ever talked about the software involved.
We don't have anything.
Y'all do not have anything?
If you do off the back of my page.
Work session. Last page.
I have, uh, put together a comparison of, of what you would expect if we were going to do the coding. Okay, um, it, it's, it's a lot more involved than just buying the software, okay? We have hardware involved, we have maintenance involved, we have printers involved, we're gonna need employees to get involved. Um, we're gonna have to start buying more batteries, we're gonna need time, I mean, you're talking about a, a big deal. So, what I've asked ESNS to do is to, to propose a three-year agreement with us, okay? For coding for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And, uh, with us paying in advance, it gives us a, a lot bigger price break, okay? Now, we've been meeting about this, we've discussed this, Leslie's the current chairman, she's, she's back there somewhere. Um, we, um.
And a good one too.
Yes, we, um, you know, we've, we've, everybody has, has brought up the topic of, we, we know that ESNS has, uh, made mistakes in the past, okay? Um, I think though, with the cost savings available to us. The time we will save with all the policies we're gonna have to put in place, all the, the, the processes we're gonna have to put in place. To make sure that all this is done correctly, um, it's worth doing ESNS as the coding. With us doing a new process that we started during municipal elections. That's do a private LNA before the elections come up, so that we have time to find issues, get the issues fixed. And move forward with the election, uh, ahead of time. You have any questions? Um, you know, this is, this is always, uh, uh, you know, a tough discussion to have. I know y'all don't, y'all don't wanna pay for this, um, I know we're not fans of ESNS and how things have, have come down in the past. Um, but I think it's going to be the lesser of two evils, so to speak.
Also, added on this is the liability issue, on who has the liability of this coding.
Now, this, the discussion has come up in the past as well, in, in response to that of if the election fails. Or something goes wrong, it's gonna come back on you five, no matter who does the coding, okay? We've, we've, we've discussed that as well. But what this does for us is this gives us somebody we don't have to rely on to be here at the county. So, what I'm getting at is, we do the coding, we're gonna have to have an employee that's gonna have to go through yearly training. And we're gonna have to have some way to convince that employee not to leave. So, you're gonna invest eight thousand dollars a year in training on this employee. If this employee walks off fifteen days before the election, we're in big trouble, huge amount of trouble, okay?
Or gets sick or anything.
Correct, gets hit by a bus, or, or takes off, whatever, we're, we're, we're in trouble, okay? Yeah, ESNS needs to know thirty days beforehand to code an election, so if that employee leaves twenty-nine days before the election starts. We cannot have an electronic election. So, with, with going with them, that lowers the risk of a failed election.
Hey, you're looking at a total of how much?
It de- it, it depends on the election, but, uh, somewhere between five and six thousand dollars per election.
Know we got any option? I mean, you gonna spend that much money on one a year to train somebody?
Correct, and, and the reason that, that yearly training is gonna have to happen, even though we haven't done it in the past, is a few things. Each election is gonna be different, okay? The, the, y'all's big election, um, you know, the federal election's different than. The, um, the elections that are happening this year, the judicials, okay? You got splits, you got all kinds of reasons to make mistakes. Whoever, whoever does it is gonna have to go through training as a, at, at least as a refresher on how to do the, the election before coding. You know, the only employee we have that's ever done a program, hasn't done it in six years, she can't, she can't program anything now.
So, do you have a total? What is it gonna cost?
I did not total it up on the right-hand side or the left, but it's around forty-five thousand dollars versus around fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
And that's for how many elections?
That's for the next three years. Noting that this doesn't cover any, um, costs that we haven't foreseen. For example, if the, the ballot printer is broken, that's gonna be fifty thousand dollars we're gonna have to purchase. We do not know if it works or not. I have reason to believe it, it does not. Strong reason to believe.
So, there's gonna be additional money here also for staff, isn't it?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah. So, really, it's gonna call, when are we gonna get that number?
Uh, I mean, we can, that, that part-time employee's in there as well. All that, all that call, everything I could think of over there is on the right-hand side if we, if we decide to hire and decide to do the coding ourselves.
No, no, I'm talking about the left.
On the left, well, you're already paying Mr. Delaval to, to do the LNA, which is on the left.
This cost here in the past, you know, the last couple of years, we brought in people from ESNS.
This is not bringing in somebody, this is Mr. Delaval with my support doing the, all the stuff you would have ESNS doing. This is strictly coding and repairing our P B's. That's, that's all this cost is, the county will take on the rest of it. And, and note that we are not talking about, it's a separate, very lengthy discussion to talk about other people outside the county using the avitronics. Which we'll discuss later, this is strictly county-run elections.
So, the left is more of a turnkey with ENS, ESNS?
No, turnkey would be a lot more. This is, this is us, this is what we've been doing the last ten elections.
Remember that turnkey's a lot more.
Yeah, we take the P B's, we send them off to Omaha, they program them and repair them and send them back.
I think that one, one of the things we need to remember is, I think Mr. Delaval was not available the last, uh, election.
That is correct, because his wife was sick.
So, they sent a replacement, or how did it?
No, my first election was the general election, that's the time I had to get y'all to help me bring two people in from ESNS. Okay, that's the only time I've ever brought somebody here from ESNS. I have run all the other elections. We just haven't coded. We just haven't coded. It's two different things. There's actual day of, there's the testing, and there's the post-election, and then there's the coding. This is just coding.
So what's your major, so, uh, what do you recommend?
I recommend that we, we sign this three-year agreement for coding with E S and S. And Mr. Delavalle, or if Mr. Delavalle decides to leave, depending on, on Ms. Lewis's recommendation, that a part-time employee run, run the testing and, and the toweling of.
So is there an out if we decide to change?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Craig, Craig and I have been working on that and I've already started now. There's another, another piece to this. We're also, um, ha- have some dues owed E S and S because lost equipment. So we're in the middle of negotiations for that as well. We may be able to be forgiven for that equipment if, if we sign this three-year agreement, potentially.
So you still work on getting away from the machines?
I know you are. So you feel pretty good about this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You know.
I agree with you, Jay, but I don't know how you get away from it. It's really easy. You go to paper.
Well, can, you know, continuing that conversation, I think that the general.
I ain't gonna bother my.
Yeah, I, I know, but I think the general, uh, attitude better right now downtown is that statewide, uh, we will continue to use the machines we have through the fifteen elections, which is, and then maybe at that time really start looking seriously at replacing those machines.
Right. I would think that's probably, that's what I'm hearing him saying, saying, so. All right, so y'all okay with putting this on Monday?
So you have much choice.
Do what now?
Just don't put it on consent. I don't wanna vote against consent again.
Put it on the regular agenda there if you would, Miss Janice. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it, Rust.
Thank y'all.
E.
Okay, uh, this is an attorney item, uh, discussion of House Bill fifteen sixty. Uh, and you wanna?
I'd be glad to discuss it.
That's the one that I got a call from, uh, Mark Baker on.
Probably would've gotten a call from Mark about this. Uh, this is, uh, obviously, it's originating out of Mark's committee in the House, the Judd A. Committee. Um, the Mississippi Manufacturers Association has been pushing legislation for several years that basically authorizes by fiat, uh, forces all boards of supervisors across the state uh, to exempt from avalon taxation pollution control equipment that is utilized in manufacturing businesses, industrial, et cetera. And, uh, there, there is no discretion given to the boards of supervisors whether or not to grant the exemption under the proposed statute. So what Mark has been doing is contacting you guys and myself, he called me and asked, uh, and others, I'm sure, uh, to, to, to be in support of and to, so to speak, get his back, because he's getting a lot of pressure from the Manufacturers Association, uh, to push this through as a mandate. What Mark has done is gone in and amended it, and it's come out of the House and is over in the Senate, uh, side now as a discretionary act if the board makes findings and decides that it is appropriate to grant the exemption. Uh, then the exemption can be granted, but it's not mandated.
Cause he took out, he took out the wording shall and put may in there.
May, that's correct.
To give us the discretionary.
That's exactly right. And what Mark asked specifically was whether the board would be willing to, uh, indicate by way of a, a resolution or some other official statement that it prefers the discretionary language in the, in the bill as presented.
Did we get any numbers on, I know we were looking from John to see if we had any numbers. I know that's kinda tough to.
We, we've got no numbers.
Okay.
But, but, uh, we need to remember, the way this bill is written, it is very general.
Right.
And, uh, does not define pollution control equipment processes very well.
Right.
Uh, an example, every gas pump has a pollution control device on it. Uh, and I'm sure that once this bill is, if it is passed, uh, there are a lot of camels out there wanting to get their nose under the tent.
Yeah, once you put shall in there, then we really have no, no, I mean, we have to give it to them, right?
So we need to do a resolution in opposition to it?
Well, a resolution supporting Mark's version, which is, has the mandatory, I'm sorry, has the discretionary language in it.
Right.
And I can prepare that and have it available, you know, unless you guys want to have it on the regular agenda. We just put it on the consent agenda as authorizing resolution, and I'll put the resolution together with you guys to be able to sign Monday.
I think that'd be good.
And that's leaving control here in the county.
Control of the board.
Maybe something we wanna do.
Yeah.
At some point.
I, I agree.
To give some industry, uh, a break or something.
It could be, but at least we'd have the discretionary.
Could be an economic development issue.
Yeah, I think you wanna reserve this for, for, uh, businesses and industries that are being good corporate citizens here in Rankin County.
Right.
And by having it mandated, they don't have to be a good corporate citizen in our county.
You just have to give it to them. Got you. Yeah, I think that'd be good.
And pass the house. Pass the house.
Yes, sir, that's right. It's on.
Whose desk is it on over?
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Wood. I don't know.
Okay.
All right. The next item is one of those that, uh, all I have to do is, uh, give the topic. Solid waste rates. Uh, we've discussed this a couple times in the past. Uh, we've done, uh, and I say we, uh, we are, uh, mostly crunch, continuing to crunch numbers, uh, to show that, and we've broken it down this time, but there's two points here. One is we got the solid waste rates that, uh, are applicable to the household customers. We've got another set of number, uh, costs that we pay waste management for that's not associated with households, but associated with the dumpsters, the bins that are set throughout the county that are used by all residents of the county. Both, both, uh, outside municipalities and inside municipalities.
Very used.
Uh, and so what we have done is made an attempt to, uh, separate that out. For example, uh, oh, I, I thought you had those, okay. You slow down a little bit, coast of luck. And, and as I, uh, talk about the containers, if you look over on the right-hand side of the paper under the column, containers, we figured that we've spent about, a little better, just barely over two hundred thousand dollars a year in support of those containers. Uh, which then you can make an argument that the household customers should not pay the total cost of tho- those costs of those containers. But that is a county-wide cost. Uh, then as we take a look, and if you remember, I think the last time rates have been increased was nineteen ninety-six. Uh, they were set at forty-eight dollars a quarter for, uh, across the board. And then at, with fifty percent of that for elderly and disabled. Uh, we have about twenty-six thousand households altogether. About twenty thousand of them are, uh, regular, and about six thousand of them, or a little better than six thousand, are disabled and elderly, meaning over sixty-five. They pay at twenty-one dollars a month. Uh, the question also was asked, uh, last time, what would happen, what would be the effect if we adjusted, uh, the disabled and the seniors to be the same as across the board at forty-two dollars? Wanted to know the result of that. The result of that are, is the num- are, are the numbers, uh, at the very bottom of the page. And, uh, that would be the result of that. In other words, in two thousand and fifteen, uh, we would break with about five thousand dollars left, left in the bank or left in the account. But to get up to the, uh, top of the account of the page, two thousand and thirteen, we had receipts of three thousand, or three million nine hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. I wanna make a comment on that. When we, we actually collected a little better than a hundred percent in two thousand and thirteen of what was billed, that is because when we transferred the collection over to the tax collector and she started sending out the notices under the letterhead of tax collector, there were people who came in and paid. So that, some of that was one-time collections of, uh, past due. But that says that she, uh, she did what we wanted her to do on that. But as you jump forward to the current fiscal year, we would expect collections this year to be about three million eight hundred thirty thousand dollars at the current rate of forty-two and twenty-one. We expect the, uh, the cost to, uh, waste management for the household pickup to be four point one million. We have another hundred and sixty-six thousand, hundred and sixty-six thousand, which are the office expenses, salaries, those types of things, for a total cost of four point two seven seven million. And this is for the household pickup now. Uh, which means that if we do nothing, we leave it at the forty-two and twenty-one, then we will actually end up with a deficit of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that account. On top of that, we will still need to pay the two hundred and two thousand dollars for the containers. If, if we take, that, that's kind of a, a base year that we're in right now. If we go, if we increase by eight dollars, uh, then you can see that what will happen starting in two thousand and fifteen, we will have, the expenses will go up slightly because we, that's by contract. And that contract runs through, uh, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we will end up, at the end of that fiscal year, with about two hundred five thousand dollars to the good in the household account. Will still have to pay the two hundred and one. That two hundred and one is what I'm saying is a general fund expense. And you can take a look at the years go. At the end of two thousand and sixteen, we will end up with a balance, positive balance of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the year. But when you add it to the two hundred and five thousand dollar balance, uh, that you have left over from the previous year, that's where you end up with the three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar balance forward. And you can see how that goes, and it works itself all the way down to right now. And this is really soothsaying when we look out to, uh, two thousand and twenty. But according to these numbers, uh, we're just about even at the end of two thousand and twenty. So our recommendation will be to raise the rates, uh, eight dollars a quarter for across and four dollars a quarter for the seniors. And, uh, and probably, and implement that beginning in July the first of two thousand and fourteen, which means we'll get one quarter of those rate increases for this fiscal year, which will decrease the, uh, deficit in two thousand and fourteen, uh, by about, I'll have that figured out. Anyhow, I'll tell you, about eighty thousand dollars or so in two thousand and fourteen. But the, uh, but that, that will be our recommendation.
Something that wasn't clear to me when he came and talked to us, but he was talking, I know the, the, um, areas where houses are close together than municipalities or, I'm, I'm sure up in the rural area of, um, around the reservoir, that the, the, you know, it's, it's like, it looks like some of this would offset. They could do that cheaper. Really, it figured out cheaper because they were, go lots much faster than they went in the rural area. But it looks like some of that would offset because in this cost, because this is so much, this is cheaper, and I agree, he's, he's picking it up faster. Then why wouldn't this offset some of our costs in the rural area that takes longer? Cause he's picking up five to one or six to one probably in the, in the, uh, heavier populated areas that he is in the rural area. But he's charging the same, is, is that correct for the, uh, for both?
I'm sure they just look at the overall households.
Did we make a chance to ask them if they had any suggestions for us?
I'd be curious.
What we could do going forward to keep us from just having to increase our costs over and over?
Well, I think that we will. As I said, this contract, we've got a signed contract with them for a rate, uh, through, uh, two thousand and fifteen. This time next year, we'll probably have our, we'll be at least putting another R F P on the street. Uh, there are several things we wanna look at in a new R F P. Although we looked at it last time, as I've gone through and I've read it, uh, and decided not to use it, what do we wanna look at recycling again, uh, at the household level? Uh, but also, uh, discussing any ways, uh, that we can maybe hold the cost down on this. Uh, one of the, you know, it, one of the options that has been suggested over the last years is one time a week. Uh, we'll discuss that again. Uh, the whole issue will be opened up again about this time next year. Until then, we've got a contract.
Do that, you need, gonna, gonna have to put on about two more crews from the county to clean up trash.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Did they have any suggestions for us, what we could do?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, not to this time, Jay, and, uh, they.
No, they didn't have any real suggestion.
No, to answer your question, no.
Yeah. Wonder how, how, do you have any idea, Johnson, talking, how this, the rates would compare? Our rates comparing to like what they have for like the West Rankin, you know?
Yes, but two things. Our rates are higher than West Rankin. But once again, the West Rankin is a good example of the density issue.
I understand that.
Secondly, is, I'm not so sure that we have exactly the same contract as far as what they do and how they do it.
Well, I understand, but I was just curious because of the, the density versus how they compensated a little more here for the, uh, non-dense, uh.
And, and our rates are higher than the West Rankin, yes. I, uh.
Jared, what they.
And that's, that's, that's as negotiated, once again, that's as negotiated in the contract.
I'm sure what they've got is kinda like out in your area and my area and Walter's area for sure. Uh, out in the most rural areas is probably way higher. And then they compensate by, you know, once you put it all together, then it kinda comes out with that average. So if you really, you, you really couldn't.
The West Rankin coverage footprint looks a whole lot nicer.
Oh, I understand, but I mean to say, oh, as far as West Rankin, because of their heavy population, they have X number of dollars. And I'm just curious, does that give you an idea of what the, they're figuring on the, uh, the dense areas ranking county?
Versus the rural.
Versus the rural. Yeah, cause we got a pretty significant, you know, area that's dense itself, the whole area, reservoir area. I mean, that's just like municipality.
Right.
It's all neighborhoods.
But then you got such a huge.
Supervisor made the statement, you could go faster.
They what?
Wanted Brian to see if he picked that up. Says you go fast in the country. You know, and the other thing is we, I'll get back to the contract. Uh, this is a contract that there's no thirty, ninety-day out on.
Out, right.
You know, there was a three-year out. We hit that three-year period and renewed. So we're into this contract until the end of fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
So, something else that Mr. Stringer touched on a minute ago. This eight-dollar increase will carry us out, and that'll depend, like you said, you know, on, on the contract that's done next time, expenses versus everything. It looks like it could carry us out to twenty twenty. But if we don't do something with the container costs, find a way to pay for those outside of this, we'll be back in deficit next year. It is just not gonna help with the container cost.
Talking about the roll-off?
The roll-off.
But you know what? If we don't have those containers, they're gonna dump all over the side of the road.
Oh, I, I understand that. We're not, we're not proposing that we do away with them. It's just that we have to address them separately. Because some of this two hundred thousand, yeah, are containers that are used during our spring cleanup that we pay for. Some of it is the cost that we pay a, a, a contract company to come in, um, for hazardous waste day. That's used by all citizens. That is not just rural residents that use that. That is municipalities also. They're not charged to come when they come to these days for a payment of any kind.
How many roll-offs did you say we had across?
I don't know the number that we have, but outside of this amount that's paid out of solid waste, we have containers that are paid out of General County, and we have containers that are paid out of the road department, but. And we have containers that are paid out of the road department, but.
Right.
These are just the ones that are paid out of the solid waste account here. If, you're gonna add another hundred and twenty-five thousand or so, what we pay in the other funds to go with this. If we took all of those containers and put them out there. What on millage outside? The, uh, county, county outside mills, we'd have to put on about a half mill to take care of that. If we use county-wide millage, because everybody gets the benefit of it. We could probably put on about a quarter, shift a quarter of mill into that to take care of just the roll-off containers. And we're not talking maybe adding new millage on, we're maybe talking shifting a quarter of mill out. Because as it is right now, we're handling these with General County funds.
Okay, but you won't be adding millage?
No.
We're talking about maybe shifting.
Just shifting.
Very much like we shifted millage back in the Bridgetts, that type of stuff.
So, one mill outside would cover four hundred thousand, is that roughly?
Uh, about.
But, but we would be, have a millage on the people outside the municipalities. Uh, and the people inside municipalities use these services also.
You're not, yeah, but I thought you were just gonna shift the millage, you're not gonna charge.
Right, but what, what we were saying is, we're not talking about still creating a new, but we're talking about the difference of using county outside millage. Such as the volunteer fire millage is based off of, or using county-wide millage, which does include the municipalities. But they also have the benefit of using these roll-off containers, recyclable containers. Abatement days and everything like that. We're not just putting those days on the rural residents.
Yeah, because, you're right, because all use it.
Oh, use that and a quarter mill would take care of that, we'd have to look at it more closely when we see what the figures are for next year. But we wouldn't generate new millage, we'd shift millage.
So nobody'd ever feel it.
Right.
Yeah, the only, and the only time we do this during the budget time. But, but it's, it, it becomes a fairness issue. On one side, it's not fair to pay out of General County, uh, the cost for the residents. But at the same time, it's not fair to charge the residents the cost of, uh, county-wide. That's really a general county cost.
Right.
So if we did a, a, a whole mill outside county and a quarter mill county-wide, that should more than cover us for future.
Get your calculator out.
You know, that, 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 that's the, uh, that's the question, whether you wanna do a millage increase or not.
I don't see us doing a millage increase, I'm just.
Me either, I'm not talking about doing a millage increase. I, I'm talking about shifting over a mill outside and, and, uh, a portion of millage county-wide to cover the roll-offs.
That, that's a different, that's a different amount of money now.
Right.
I understand.
Yeah.
I can't incorporate it into one fund using two different sources of antelorum. Now, you could designate within the General County funds, a quarter to be used for solid waste. But I can't put it out there into a solid waste fund that's based on millage if I'm using two different sources. Of millage, one's county-wide and one's county outside, they're two different sets of antelorum.
So we couldn't intermingle them together?
Can't intermingle them.
Really?
Hmm. I didn't, I'd have thought you good too.
Well, I mean, what would be the difference though, if we set up? Like you said, I mean, if we wanted to put a millage on to cover the cost of garbage for outside the county. And that we wanted to, you know, spread some of the cost for the roll-offs inside the county, how would we do that?
Something I've never, I'd have to figure that one out. That's a little bit different animal than I've ever worked with.
But, but that gets back once again to the, uh, to the fairness issue. If you put a millage and you paid the, uh, the waste management fee out of the millage, the outside county millage. Then you are gonna be, have a millage on people who don't use the service.
Right.
Rather than having the customer paying the fee.
A lot of people.
Well, because they may well just own property out there, they're paying millage on and don't even have a, a garbage can on it.
Think that's open for discussion.
They're paying twice because they're paying for their home.
Well, there's a reason why other counties are doing this, you know, this is more of the trend rather than.
Is it?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I didn't know, I must've been asking, I didn't know. That's gonna be a tough one to sell, cause you're gonna, they're already paying it at their.
You're not getting any more money away from them.
You're saying the, you're saying that mill to cover it, cover it all and that quarter mill to cover the rest.
A mill will not cover the entire.
That's, that's what I'm, right.
Just help with the roll-offs and stuff.
So why would you charge them that, why'd you even consider charging the, a mill out there for the?
He don't have any rural area.
Huh?
He doesn't have any farmers with a thousand acres.
I think, I think what Jay was saying though, what you were talking about, the mill would carry the increase. So that we don't have to do an eight-dollar increase per household, is that right?
Yeah, and then we could do, I, I, if we can't do it, I, you know, we talked about doing a. Uh, a county-wide millage to cover the roll-offs.
Which would be a quarter or however much, yeah.
And it wasn't an increase, it was just.
It was a shift.
Just a shift. This won't even get out in the, we wouldn't have to advertise or anything, I mean, we'd have to advertise through the budget, but wouldn't be a, correct. Yeah, I can't see a.
Well, uh, you know, and, and I understand, you know, it's just how we wanna handle it.
Right.
If you take and you shift twenty-five percent, uh, or point two-five mills out of the current millage. Out into, designate that out of the general fund for this, you're still paying for it out of the general fund.
Right, you're still using that money.
Yeah, it's, it's really the same money, it's just how you're identifying, very much like you did with the, the library commission.
Right. You know, uh, eight dollars a quarter.
A quarter, yes.
I mean, you're doing the math, that's only what, two dollars and eighty cents on, how much?
Two sixty-seven.
Two sixty-seven a month, and I know that's. Not a whole lot of money, but it is to people, but it is a service. And it is one of those things, we've gotta come out of a deficit on, so.
You know, it's thirty-two dollars a year, there's about a hundred pickups a year.
Right. So, I. I figure that, uh, eight dollars a quarter is a very good, you know, it's, don't wanna have to do it, but, uh, we've gotta do something. For the service of the people, so.
Is a thousand customers the closest we can make waste management get to? I mean, that, that doesn't seem fair to us at all that they're billing us a thousand more than what we have.
I, um, I, I understand what you're saying and we've had that discussion, but that's what's in the contract.
Well, maybe we oughta, you know, pay close attention to that next year, whatever.
Yes.
Keep your list.
We've had that discussion. And, and the house count was a joint house count between the county and waste management.
And we're talking about the roll-off dumpster? How many of us re- request through waste management? For our grandchild's birthday party to have a roll-off dumpster?
I've never heard of that. I've never heard of that.
No.
I neither.
A roll-off dumpster, that'd be a heck of a birthday party.
You ain't kidding.
I just using that for an example.
I've never requested a roll-off dumpster ever.
No.
That don't say to you that.
Well, I don't have. For the city.
What are you requesting them for?
That's for the cleanup of a, a lake in the Rankin County.
Yeah, I think you get charged for that.
Yeah, I don't get charged for it, that's a, that's a sponsorship.
Yeah, that's a sponsorship, okay. But rank, but waste management gets paid.
But you just talking about for municipality.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I was just, like, individuals could call up and get one?
I'd mean.
If, if you do, you have to, you know, that's a contract with you and the waste management.
Right.
Really, I know that, I got a check, I got it on my desk, where I'm having to pay.
Really?
You must have a big party.
No kidding.
We didn't get invited.
That's what I'm saying, that's a, that's a contract between the individual and waste management.
That'd be, that's just an individual deal.
Yeah.
All right, let's, uh, let's make a decision, if we wanna go ahead and, um, take action on this today or put it on Monday. Whichever way, uh, I think that, uh, we've talked this one.
Is it gonna be the same?
We have talked it, talked it, I am comfortable with either way on that. Just what y'all are most comfortable with.
I'm not, well, it's not necessary evils, what this is, uh.
This is a, uh, this is, no matter what, it's gonna be one of those that, uh, we're gonna take a ding on it. You know, eight dollars a quarter, I know, like I said, no one's gonna like it, but.
Eight dollars a quarter beginning first of July of two thousand and fourteen.
And then four dollars a quarter for the seniors?
Yes.
We've known for years and years and years, we're gonna have to do this at some point.
You said it's been nineteen ninety-six?
The last time we did it was about seven years ago. When Norman was here, we did one and we knew it would last for about seven years and that is about what it lasted for.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for the last year, you're right, Mr. Johnson.
This one lasts about five.
Three.
Well, last time we went twelve dollars per quarter.
They said two thousand and twenty.
No, it's gonna last three years, we'll be in a deficit again.
Well, it depends on what you do at the roll-offs.
Well, and also the next contract.
Oh, that doesn't have anything to do with roll-offs, does it?
Uh, if you continue to pay the roll-offs out of general funds.
Is that two oh one deducted out of that?
No, the two oh one.
Okay, so it's nothing to do with it, that has nothing to do with it.
Well, you know, these numbers show that, uh, it will go through two thousand and twenty now. Uh, is that, as I said before, that's soothsaying, uh, to some extent. Uh, because ones will redo the contract next year, uh, and usually. The increase to yearly increase results from, like in the current contract, we increase at the CPI. And so if that's in future contracts, then it's whatever the CPI is.
I guess I was reading this wrong.
Jay, that the increase will handle, take us out several years, that excludes the roll-off containers.
Yeah.
If we pay for them out of this, you're right, we're back in a deficit again within two years, we're back in a deficit.
So this is two thousand and eighteen, where it shows a thirty-three thousand deficit?
Right, but see what.
Is that deducting the roll-offs?
No, that's not, but what happens is, we have in the first three years, we have built up a surplus. That we then start using from, just like we did this last time, until about twenty twenty, depending on the contract and everything. We're back at having to do something again.
Right.
How is these numbers gonna change from today till the seventeenth?
The seventeenth.
Not unless we find an era, so you mean the, the third?
To the third.
To the third, today?
No, no, it's, yeah, we can build on today, whether we can to seventeenth, we've been beat this horse for about a month.
Hey Laura, you said that this two thousand is two hundred thousand, is not all the roll-offs?
No, it's not, it's what's paid out of the waste management fund.
What percentage of roll-offs is this?
This is the biggest portion of it, we have some that we pay, um, out of General County, um, which is for. Um, like, we have one here, the sheriff's department, the jail, um, DHS. Department of Human Services, those all come out of General County on a monthly basis. Then out of the road department, we have, um, one in Florence, uh, White Street, um, up here at Marquette. We have several of the ones that are paid for out of the road.
Those are the ones we got reduced last year, or year before last?
Basically, all of them got restructured.
Okay.
Um, and, and came up with some different pricing, but these are only the ones that are paid for out of the waste management fund.
So these are paid out of waste management fund, which means something's gonna be done.
Correct.
You can't just shove it under the rug, so.
Can you get us?
That's what you're saying, you could shift, possibly shift a quarter to pay for these, quarter mill.
Right, to handle the roll-off containers.
And can you get us a listing of where all these roll-offs are?
I, I, I've done a new list, I don't, did not make copies for today, but I've done a new list.
Yeah, I mean, that way, we'll kind of know exactly where all these are and stuff, so.
Well, I can tell you those two, down, Dale can tell you, those are overused.
Right.
You cannot get them before they fall again.
Right, they're, they cost because they're picked up way more than once a week and they're just continually recycled because they're.
I think it's very, uh, beneficial to the whole county that we do have these. I'm not saying that, but at least that way we'd have kind of a place that we could tell people, okay, you do have these as a service. So, you know, that way we would know. Um, with all that being said, um, I'd like to go ahead and take this up today if we could, possible, I mean, we've been talking about this, so.
I make the motion.
You make a motion to add this item to the agenda, or do we need to add this item, it says for.
It's on here.
It says possible action, so.
All right, so you make motion to what?
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars for regular households and four dollars for the seniors for a quarter?
Beginning one July, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, motion by Mr. Brown, second, second by Mr. Johnson, any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right. Congratulations, Colonel.
That's it.
Review of the agenda?
I, uh, okay. I have nothing more to add.
You've added enough?
You had the easy stuff. Anybody got any questions on the agenda, the consent?
I don't know what is, um, under Bridget, on C, that life pack, we're declaring them sole source? I have no idea what unit is.
What is that?
Think that's, uh, shockers?
Is the fire department.
Fire department.
But I can't imagine that there's only one corporation that sells that stuff.
We have to let her answer that.
We're gonna have to answer that. I, I can't address that right.
Yeah, let's find, find out about that question on that one.
Yeah, good question.
What is the, uh, on down here, uh, under you that has this tax compliance policy, what is that?
That's real lawyer stuff.
But it's under you.
It's under me.
We're gonna have, uh, real lawyers here, actually. Present it. Sue Fairbain, who is with Steve Ed's office, will be here along with, uh, Steve Pittman, I believe, who's. Well, all this amounts to actually is the Internal Revenue Service has certain documentation, certain questions that are asked each year. For bonded indebtedness, that is, uh, there is the issue of whether or not there is compliance with IRS regulations and tax policy. This board needs to adopt a tax compliance policy so that a box can be checked. Yes, Rankin County has a tax compliance policy, that's what it amounts to. So you have in your packet a copy of Steve's letter, a copy of the actual policy itself and the resolution.
Is this Steve Ed's or Steve Pittman?
Well, Steve Ed's, uh, put together the documentation that you're gonna be looking at, I don't know why Steve Pittman's coming.
That's why, that's why, what's he here for?
He's coming with C. That's all I know.
Aye.
What is the, uh, what the public hearings we're having? Where are the, who are they?
Sorry, say again.
Set in those two public hearings.
The two you heard of.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right, right, I got you, yeah.
About consent one H.
Where consent one H?
I'm sure I've seen it before.
That's gonna be the lawyer. Greg, all this does is in situations where you guys have given me authority, for instance, the personal property tax collections. Y'all authorized me to file lawsuits. When we put that all together, we had to wait until the next board meeting to get you guys to authorize Ms. Lorna to issue the check to pay the filing fees.
Got you.
And service process fees. All this does is, when y'all have authorized the filing of suit, they can go ahead and issue a check to cover the filing fee, I don't have to wait to the next board meeting.
Okay, all right, good.
All right, well, next, what's Jay?
That's the what?
That's a request by nine churches who are trying to help an elderly couple on Johnson County. Uh, their home is literally just falling in, and so they're going to provide him with a, um, manufacturer equipment. And others have donated their services, it's just an act of the nine months to help them.
I just saw those nine churches, I was like, what are we doing for nine churches?
Nine churches chipping in to help them.
There are churches that want to help.
Are we?
Okay. Any more questions? All right.
Yeah.
You do?
Well, I guess, what's this other stuff down here for our road department? I think you're gonna put a lot more on the agenda now for approval, road department work.
Oh, they, this is cleaning it up with our new attorney on board and everything, he's gonna make sure to keep us, uh, keep us legal.
Listen, F and G? This cleaning up some drainage stuff?
Oh, okay, yes. Uh, Jay, as you know, uh, unincorporated areas of the county, uh, subdivisions in the unincorporated areas of the county. When those subdivisions are complete, the county takes responsibility for the streets. Obviously, the rights and way of those streets, that becomes in essence public property. But the drainage, the ditches, the easements, uh, retention ponds, those are all either retained by the developer. Or they're passed through the, uh, creation documents of the subdivisions, they're passed to a homeowner's association, if those are set up. So, in situations where we have potential damage being caused by a drainage facility that is still private property. When it impacts the public facility, the street, this board makes a finding that we need to take the street. Which allows us to get on to the private section of the drainage and take repairs that need to be done. These two qualify for repair work, but they are on property that is not owned by the county.
Where are they?
F and G.
F and G on, uh, consent. One F and G.
Uh, Mr. Dale's here, and on G, uh, we had, what, three feet of water? Yeah, standing on our street. Um, and there is a blockage, several feet, I don't know how, how many feet. There's a blockage in the drainage pipe that's preventing the water from draining off of the street. You got residents out there that can't, I mean, they're having to forward streams to get to their pride.
That sounds kinda like a lot of, same thing. Did we get that one fixed?
Or collapsed pipe.
So, the, the storm drain-
It's not on here.
That runs in between people's houses. We're gonna start going out working on those.
If-
Is it gonna be on here a month?
If it is creating damage to our street, which this qualifies as.
Well, this is gonna be a-
Expensive.
Snowball. Same thing, same thing on G.
Well, that was G.
I mean, okay.
I mean, it's F on F. Right. That's right.
Is there something in, I thought you, you were trying to work up something, Buster? But to cover these retention ponds, I was looking at one somewhere the other day. I think over at the school, I was growing up in a little willow trees and things, and a few years, I mean, it does absolutely nothing. But, I don't know, I've never seen water in it. But, I mean, a few years, it's just gonna be a, a mess. And I'm just using it as an example, I know that'd be the school's problem, but these others around. Well, when they, they turn it over, I mean, we're gonna be cleaning up retention ponds. Who's, who's gonna be responsible, especially in a situation like you just said? This drain stopped up to create a problem for our road, well, obviously, we're, here we are, we're cleaning it up. I mean, this is gonna be ongoing, on, no, no, never ending.
And all it will be, it's gonna be cleaning up, it'll just be open, open up, that the water can-
Open the flow.
Yeah, that's cleaning up.
Yeah.
Cut up whatever it takes to get the water out of it, but we have a plan.
But you're right, Mr. Morrison. We don't know how many retention ponds there are.
Right.
We don't, but then, we are trying for the future to address that in our new regulations.
That's the one you're working on, right, the new regulations?
That's what I'm saying.
Right. Okay.
Now, which we will need to address the issues then, that is in process, and that will address it.
And to force it would be, I can see where that'd be an issue if the homeowners just don't do it, who's gonna make them? Yeah, he's gone, right.
All right, any more questions on the agenda or the, uh, consent?
Yeah, we didn't get a nice frame for this.
That's what I was asking about, where my frame?
Certainly, the fact that you got it, it really is important. Well, it is.
Mandatory meeting we went to.
That's big for me.
That's right, Wood doesn't get any fun, any funding for his district.
No funding.
That's right, you didn't know there was a catch for that.
We're gonna exclude his district now.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn until March third at, uh, nine o'clock?
I got a question for you, real quick.
Yes, sir.
You know, we talked about taking some pictures for our website?
Yes, sir.
Y'all probably haven't put much thought into it, but, you know, we, we, I think it's important that we get the right images on our front page. Uh, or pages, and you know, Rankin County, I just thought about this the other day. You know, we, I think we're, we have more horses than any other county in state of Mississippi, so it may not be a bad idea to get a nice horse farm out there. And Ergon is probably our biggest corporation we have, um, you know. What do y'all think about us trying to get them incorporated, uh, on the site?
That's good, yeah. I think horse thing would be, uh, be a good thing and, and both would be fine.
We don't really have any one signature thing that sets us apart, you know?
Chairs on.
Well, that's a given, yeah.
Hey, we got a lot of sports going on.
You want it just to come to the Capitol table?
And particularly the good looking jerk, I mean, that's-
Absolutely, yeah. Well, that's an opinion there.
They said that switchboard lit up, them women called, who was that?
Yeah.
All right.
That was all.
Any more questions?
Tell me about Ergon, let me make a remark about that. I got a call last night. Ergon probably one day next week's gonna donate a truck, and a water truck, to this county.
Yeah.
And have the appraisal value of the truck, talk about fire department. Can we put that amount over into the fire fund to take care of some of these things for the fire?
Well, sure.
That's just tongue in cheek.
All right, any more comments, questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn until March the third, nine o'clock again?
The move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson, questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, we're adjourned.